I'd like to call to order the County of Placer Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October the fourteenth, 2021. If everyone could stand for the flag salute.
Fideligis, we provide the United States of America to the Republic which stands unlatient under God, indivisible, with purity and justice for all.
Roll call. Remembered.
Okay, good afternoon. Unfortunately, Mr. Cannon can't join us today, so Mr. DiMattei.
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Seveson?
He's off.
He was here.
He was.
How about Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person through a remote virtual process and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link to the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 931-0976-0821. Please press the star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with your hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press the star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and to allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is titled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. At this time, EJ, if you could provide your report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. It's been just, what, a week since we last met, so my report is going to be very brief. We did have a Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday. They did consider the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan 1B Amendment. That project was approved on a five-zero vote. Upcoming Planning Commission meetings, we are scheduled to meet next on October 28th. That will be a regular 10:00 AM start. Of note, one of the projects that will be considered on that, not considered, but we'll be having a draft EIR meeting on the Ridge Project, which is adjacent to the Bickford Ranch Project. And then November 4th is going to be the second Advisory Redistricting Commission meeting. That will be an evening meeting. The item itself will be 6:05. Not sure yet if we'll have other items on there, so if we do, it may be like an earlier start like we're having today. So that's all I have for you this afternoon.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of the planning director? All right. I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. And anyone in the audience wish to have a comment? Anyone on Zoom? Any raised hands? All right. With no other comment, public comment for matters not on the agenda is now closed. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioners like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, does anyone from the public want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Anyone on Zoom? No. In that case, I'd request a motion for the consent agenda.
Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve consent agenda items.
Seconding. Okay. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I had a first from Mr. Hersog, and I believe it was a second from Mr. Woodward.
Correct.
So a vote for Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to take just a minute here to talk about our process that we have been typically using, but I don't know if the public's aware of it. First of all, for each item that we discuss, there's going to be a presentation by staff. Then the Commission will ask questions of staff. This is purely to get clarification of the staff. At that point in time, we open it up for public comment. Each person in the public has three minutes to speak, and then we'll close a public comment. And after that, the staff is able to provide a response to those public comments made. Then we open it up for a Commission discussion, at which time the Commission will discuss the item. And after discussion is concluded, we'll ask for a motion to either approve or deny the item. So just wanted to go through that process, clarifying the process that we follow through. We are moving on to our first timed item, the Phillips Bear Creek Subdivision Lot 65 subdivision map modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on the item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete by Janie Blavin, Associate Planner, and she'll be presenting the item. Thank you, Janie.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. My name is Janie Blavin. I'm with the Planning Services Division in Todd City, and I'm here to present the Phelps subdivision modification. The project location is Alpine Meadows at 2210 John Scott Trail in the Bear Creek neighborhood. The yellow area on the map represents residential single-family zoning, and the green shaded area represents open space zoning. The project area is outlined in blue. So you'll see it's zoned residential single-family and is surrounded on three sides by open space zoning with a single-family dwelling to the east. Lot 65 of the Bear Creek Association subdivision is, as you can see, there's a 30-foot mapped front setback. It's made up of a 10-foot wide road easement plus a 20-foot building setback at the frontage with John Scott Trail, which is a privately owned road, so it's maintained by the HOA, which includes snow removal. Lot 65 is currently developed with a two-story single-family dwelling. There's a parking pad at street grade at the center of the road frontage with stone steps down about eight feet in elevation to the front door. In the winter, this path is buried in snow and difficult to maneuver for the homeowner. So the owner explored design options to provide covered ingress to the existing home. The proposed project is a new covered walkway from the parking area to the front door that follows a very similar alignment as the existing stone steps and follows the current topography as well. This project was presented to this Commission at the May 27th hearing when there was a discussion regarding the proximity to the edge of pavement and the materials of the structure with regard to mitigating damage from snow removal operations and fire safety. It was, at that time, the decision to continue the item until after HOA approval was made. And the project before you today has final approval from the Bear Creek Planning Commission, including placement of the structure and materials. This is the current design with regard to edge of pavement, and the materials are described in the staff report. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions, subject to the conditions of approval. Find the project categorically exempt from review under SEQA per Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, which is Class III, new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve the subdivision map modification in the Bear Creek subdivision, Lot 65, to allow for a four-foot, two-foot, and 10 inches from the eve to property line front setback where there is a required 30-foot mapped setback from John Scott Trail frontage in order to construct a covered walkway, supported by the findings and subject to conditions of approval in the staff report. And the applicant, Erin Humphrey, is on Zoom to also present you with her project, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions of the Commission? Seeing none, is the applicant here? And does the applicant want to speak?
She is.
Yes.
She's on Zoom.
All right. Thank you.
You can all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for your time today. I just wanted to follow up on a couple items after Janie. And as she mentioned, we were here in May, and we have since then received final approval from the Bear Creek Planning Commission. And I just wanted to kind of talk about the location of the walkway. As she mentioned, it does follow the footprint of the existing stone path. So by keeping that location, we have minimal site disturbance and kind of the highest function from that existing parking area to the house. It's a small footprint. It's 160 square feet of structure, so really trying to keep it minimal by having a small path, but making it high-functioning and safe during the winter months when it's snowy. And as she mentioned, we're requesting a four-foot setback from the property line. But I don't know, do you guys have the presentation still up?
It's up, and we can go to a slide if you want Janie to do that.
Like to look at the site plan or the plan that shows those dimensions? Yeah. But I just wanted to point out, too, where John Scott Trail is and the edge of pavement, we are 13.7 feet away from that edge of pavement where the road, cars would be traveling on the road. Just kind of wanted to point that out as the distance from the actual road is quite, you know, almost 14 feet. We have talked to the snow removal company and discussed that it won't impose any impacts on snow removal activity. And as you can see, the existing stone path actually terminated outside of the property line. So with this new access, we actually keep all the circulation within the property boundaries. We did get fire, our first fire department review that was approved on July 21st, 2021. Wanted to point that out. I'm looking at my notes. I apologize. And then as far as materials go, the walkway will be constructed of heavy timber construction. This complies with the California Building Code and Wildland Urban Interface requirements. Janie, do you have the elevations you could show, please?
No, they're not in the presentation.
Oh, they're not? Okay.
They're in the staff report, though, so the Commission can look at them in the staff report.
Okay, that's great. So, yeah, I just wanted to point out that we are complying with the Wildland Urban Interface and Building Code requirements. There'll be six-by-eight posts and six-by-six beams and rafters. The roof structure will be, you know, two-by-six tongue-in-groove roof ducting with standing seam metal roof panels, making it a Class A roof assembly. And the upper storage closet will have corrugated metal panels. And at that upper area closest to the street, that durable kind of corrugated metal material was desirable for durability, resistance against all the snow, and to provide a storage closet at the top of the structure. And then additionally, this project includes bringing the existing house into compliance with the Wildland Urban Interface. All of the existing wood shingle siding will be removed and replaced with cementitious board and battened siding and corrugated metal accents. The windows will also be replaced to comply with wooie, which includes having a tempered pane. I just wanted to point that out, that in the talk last time had a lot of discussion about fire-resistant materials and including having the walkway comply, we are bringing the house up to be more durable against our changing climate. I think that's it. Just wanted to, you know, point out, the client has lived here for 40 years and is really taking a step to improve the property for children and generations, creating a safe access and accessibility from the existing parking area to the house, and having, you know, low impact on the site while requesting this variance to provide better access for the house and longevity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the Commission? Seeing none, it's time to open the public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? And Sue, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, so we have no public comment. I'm going to close the public comment period. I don't think, Janie, there's any response to public comment, so. All right, with that, let's open it up for Commission discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there's no further comment, I'll move the findings of the project.
All right.
Maybe before you do that, I do have-
Oh, just a minute. Nathan wants to make some comment.
I just want to clarify, because on this diagram, it's 2.8 inches from the eve, but in the description of the staff report, it's 2.10. Where's the error in that, or?
I'm sorry, that's 2.8 feet. So in the staff report, it's just translated to feet and inches.
All right, got it. Thank you.
All right, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move that we find the project categorically exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class III.
We have a first, second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Seveson, a second from Mr. DiMattei. So a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'll further move we approve the subdivision map modification in the Bear Creek Association subdivision, Lot 65, to allow for a four-foot, 10-inch eve to properly align from the front setback where, and there's a mistype here, where a 30-foot building setback line is identified on the subdivision map, John Scott Trail, to construct a covered walkway supported by the following findings, and is finding A and B.
And I believe staff's recommendation would also include finding C, D, and E, and that that approval would also be subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Larry, did you hear that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
First from Mr. Seveson, a second from Mr. DiMattei. So a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. We are moving on to our second timed item, the Fowler Road subdivision, Appeal of Incomplete Application Determination. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on the item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Nikki Strigan, Senior Planner, will be presenting the item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, Nikki Strigan, Senior Planner, with your Planning Services Division here today. I'm getting there. To present an appeal of an incomplete application determination for Fowler Road subdivision, I do want to point out that we have some environmental health staff members in the room. There's some technical aspects to this project, so they are here to address some of those technical questions. The appeal, as I had introduced, is for an incomplete application determination based on inadequate information to complete environmental review. So by way of background here, this is an eight-lot subdivision located on approximately 80 acres at 1275 Fowler Road. The zoning on the property is farm minimum combining zoning district, 10 acres. The project has completed four submittals as part of the environmental review process, and to date, there are some issues pertaining to water quality that have not been resolved. This is a vicinity map showing where the project is located, so you can see Highway 65 running north to south, I-80 east to west, Highway 193 east to west right here. So the project is located on Fowler Road, and it's between Virginia Town Road and Fruitvale Road. The tentative subdivision map exhibit was included in your staff report. This is a look at it, again, Fowler Road running on the eastern side of the property here. And Virginia Town Road is a bit further to the south, about 1,500 feet to the south. You can see the configuration of the subdivision as proposed. The, a little bit more background continued here. The application was submitted in June of 2017. Environmental Health provided their first round of submittal comments, which is a normal course, about a month later, requesting wells be developed on each site and testing be developed on each resultant parcel. There was a number of testing and additional submittal reviews that occurred between November 2018 and November 2020. But just this past June, the applicant proposed formally some conditions of approval that created a response from the Environmental Health Director. And so those letters are included in your packet, but the July 15th letter came from Environmental Health, and subsequently, the Environmental Review Committee deemed the application incomplete on July 20th. The reasoning I had mentioned was due to lack of evidence that well water adequate for domestic use is available on site, and that reasoning is supported by the following two sections of the code. Placer County Code is Section 1608040, which addresses major subdivision requirements, and Section 1612050, which addresses data to accompany the tentative map. Additionally, and as stated in the staff report, arsenic was found at elevated levels in the water testing, which is one of several contaminants tested as part of the water quality testing process. Environmental Health can go into detail on what arsenic is and what some of its effects are. I'll talk about these two subsections, or these two sections of the code, rather, that we will be talking about. So Section 1708040E, which addresses water supply. This outlines the basic requirements, what is required, the evidence required, and what is adequate for domestic use. And specifically, and in brief, it discusses that lots of this size shall provide evidence that well water is adequate for domestic use, that the water must meet all applicable state and county public health standards, and that the advisory agency, which is your commission, may require the subdivider to provide satisfactory evidence. There are additional subsections outlined in this section. One is E5, Priority of Serving Entities, which cites the legal entities allowed to supply water. And then the other is E6, which discusses quality and quantity of water. The other section that we're talking about is Section 1612050A3, and that addresses the data to accompany a tentative map. It outlines just very general information and states the general information provided shall include source adequacy, potability, and right thereto of water supply. So the applicant is allowed to file an appeal per County Code Section 176110A1B, which enables the applicant to appeal the decision based on any determination that a permit application or incomplete, or information submitted with the application is incomplete. And that appeal was timely filed on July 30th of this year. The appeal letter addressed the following four items, which are detailed further in your staff report. But the first item is that well testing demonstrates sufficient supply and meets drinking water standards with a state-approved off-the-shelf system, filter system, and is done in accordance with Section 1608040E3B. The second is that arsenic can be treated to drinking water standards using this filtration system. The third is that individual water treatment systems may be used for individual lot owners. And then the fourth proposed three conditions of approval. And those conditions of approval are as follows. The first is that the final subdivision map shall include a note prohibiting the issuance of any residential certificate of occupancy on the created lots until the lot owner drills a well and installs a California-approved filtration system and provides evidence to the county that water meets all state and federal drinking standards. The second condition of approval proposed was that the landowner shall provide written disclosures of this water supply and water quality requirement to any purchasers of the lots. And then the third condition of approval was that the homeowners association shall hire a qualified licensed contractor to annually inspect and maintain the water filter systems on each of the subdivision, each lot of the subdivision, to replace the water filter medium in each treatment system per the replacement schedule recommended by the manufacturer and submit a report to Placer County Environmental Health, certifying that the inspection has occurred and all required maintenance has been performed. And so the county, of course, is responding to that appeal. Again, in the staff report, the response is detailed, and I'll cover that briefly here. So the response to the first part of that appeal is that the appellant omits the remainder of Section 1608040E3A, and that Roman numeral two, sorry, excuse me, Roman numeral two, Roman numeral one addresses that, or cites that adequate domestic water shall be provided if water yields have been poor or unknown in the area. And Roman numeral two of this provision states that evidence of adequate domestic water shall be provided if other wells on the parcel show that well water adequate for domestic use is unavailable. This has been proven to be true as far as testing that has been submitted showing elevated levels of contaminants, i.e. arsenic, in the water. The second part, point of the appeal, while the applicant has provided information related to state-approved individual water treatment systems, Environmental Health is not supportive of those systems because there is no enforcement mechanism to ensure safe domestic drinking water. And of course, I think they will speak to a bit more of this later on in our presentation to you. Third point is the appellant references Section 1608040E6 and interprets this section to only apply to water purveyors. Staff believes this is applicable to individual homeowners. This section goes on to state that appurtenances used to render water safe for domestic use must be approved by the local health department, and Environmental Health, of course, does not support the use of those treatment devices. And then the fourth point of this appeal, much of this is documented in the Environmental Health Director's letter issued on July 15th or dated July 15th, that based on the responses to points one through three, the suggested conditions of approval are not adequate and do not address the basic application submittal requirements that we- do not address the basic application submittal requirements that we need to deem an application complete and disclose the full effects under sequel review. Again, I think Environmental Health will go into this, but they are not supportive of the proposed water supply method, given the arsenic levels that have shown up in some of the testing, and given that there's a lack of precedent for monitoring individual water treatment systems. If wells are drilled after the project approval, there's no assurance that each lot will have adequate water supply, and no assurance that the treatment unit will be monitored safely year after year. Furthermore, there's no assurance that the water being treated will be treated to safe enough levels for human consumption under regularly scheduled testing. That's the type of testing that's usually left up to water agencies and not to individual lot owners. So staff's recommendation is as follows. We recommend, rather, the Environmental Review Committee recommends that the planning commission take the following action to deny the appeal filed by G. Braden Chadwick and uphold the Environmental Review Committee's determination that the project remains incomplete based on the findings in the staff report. Happy to answer questions if you have them.
Okay, any questions of the Commission? Looks like we have one.
Just a couple of questions. I think you mentioned this briefly, but I just want to make sure I understood. Is there any precedent in the county and in the state that you know of, anyway, for this type of, I guess, waiver? In other words, individual filtration systems so that the people are protected?
I can't speak to the state, but my understanding is the county, County Environmental Health requires this as part of our subdivision review process.
Okay. And so what happens if, this is the first time I've dealt with something like this, this type of incomplete application? So what happens if we allow this appeal to go forward? What would be the next steps that would take place? It would enter into the sequel process, is that true?
You want to take this one?
Sure. Yeah, so Environmental Health has made the determination that this application is incomplete because they haven't provided an adequate water source. If the planning commission was so desired to grant the appeal, then that would basically be, there's multiple options in granting the appeal. One such option would be to make a determination or direct staff that conditions of approval should be prepared with that application to go forward. Ultimately, this is a tentative map application that will come back before your planning commission. So it's just this issue, and it's a question of whether or not this planning commission is supportive of Environmental Health's determination that an adequate water source is not provided, or would like to direct staff that there is an adequate determination on the water source if there are conditions of approval in place, or if certain wells are drilled, those kind of conditions. And it's really up to your commission to determine, I guess, the extent of what conditions would be imposed to allow this to move forward.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, and so currently, staff's position is that without a centralized water treatment facility, which is probably cost prohibitive for the applicant, this land will not be developed.
I don't think that's our position necessarily. There are other configurations and other things that may be able to be done with the property, but what is being proposed, an eight-lot subdivision, and what is being required as part of environmental review, you know, has not been provided.
Okay.
Commissioner, if I could too, you had asked if there are any state requirements. There are public wells that are regulated by the state. What the applicant is proposing here is individual wells that would not be, a central public well that would not be registered and regulated by the state.
Let me see, I guess I'm a little bit puzzled about the testing, where the proposed language in the condition says annually, and I think you were saying something a little bit different than that, and so what is the expectation in terms of testing these wells in terms of timing?
We lead it to the condition of approval?
No, just, what would Environmental Health perceive as the proper way to test, and when?
I'm going to have Mohan come speak to this.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Mohan Ganapati, Placer County Environmental Health. As far as your question as to the annual maintenance that they're proposing, I think, yeah, what they're proposing is have Culligan Man come in once a year, change the cartridges or filters or salts from the treatment unit. They're not proposing any testing or anything like that. In public water systems that have contaminants discovered, they are required to put the treatment unit, and then the state law requires them to test it every month for arsenic or whatever the contaminant is. Reason being is these contaminants like arsenic varies during the time of the year. Certain times of the year, during winter times, it goes up; sometimes it goes down. Depends on the rainwater bringing the arsenic-contaminated rock or clays down to the groundwater. So for that very reason, public water systems that have these kind of contaminants, they are required to test every month. Test for arsenic and maintain a treatment unit and adjust the treatment unit so that they can ensure potable water served to the public.
And so if they have a system on there that eliminates the arsenic, they still do a monthly test?
For the public water systems, yes.
For public water systems?
Public water systems, they have a, if they have a treatment unit at the public water system site that then sends it out to distribution system to the 20 houses or eight houses or whatever, they will test that every month. Any, the state law requires that any public water system that uses treatment to remove a contaminant shall be required to test every month for that contaminant, and to check their systems to make sure the cartridges and so forth are working adequately. That's for public water systems, though.
So if you have eight, eight systems when this is developed, then that would be an annual test, or that would be a monthly test?
What they're proposing is prior to certificate of occupancy of the house, for each of those lots to drill a well, and if it comes up positive for arsenic, to install a treatment unit. And then they're proposing that once a year, Culligan Man comes in, replaces the cartridges. There's no requirement for testing, which, once a year testing does not tell us anything anyway, because it varies during the time of the year. Unless it's tested every month, we would never know. And the thing is, with Environmental Health, we have no enforcement mechanism. If some homeowner says, "I'm not going to test," there's no code we can cite to say, "You shall, and you shall be fined this much." Public water systems, there is code sections that if they do not test, then, you know, there's enforcement ability on that public water system. But for individual homeowners that install a treatment unit, Environmental Health's not going to go out every month to take a look and see, is it hooked up? I mean, we have no idea if the cartridges or filters are working properly. We have no idea that a water is safe. So once again, Placer County Code, I think the reason why Placer County Code does not allow individual treatment units for these systems is because there is no enforcement mechanism for us to make sure these treatment units are working properly and cleaning up the water before the homeowner drinks it.
But that's what the homeowners' association, it would be required to do on an annual basis?
We're not requiring that. They're proposing that the homeowners' association have Culligan Man come in and service the system, that's it.
Okay.
On an annual basis.
Okay.
All right.
I think, I think I got it, thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions?
Yeah, I want to just clarify, it's incomplete because they haven't proven a viable water source, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And so what are the options for them to prove that at this point? Knowing what we know, what are their options? So there's a couple of options. One is you can require that they put conditions of approval in place that would meet to your satisfaction, I guess, compliance with that there is safe drinkable water on the site. The other one is you can require that certain wells be drilled, as is your authority as the advisory agency under that code section. Those are two possible options as to things that you could do to move forward with this, but there have been tests on the site that indicate that this is above the state mandated levels for arsenic. So the question is kind of, how do you, how do you handle that now?
Other questions?
My machine doesn't work here. So currently, there's only one well out there, is that correct? Or is there any, just one well for eight lots, is that correct? Is this where we're getting all this testing for the arsenic?
There's one permitted well that was drilled in, I believe, 2018. There's two other old wells on the site. The testing that we, the test results that we've got that showed above the MCL is the one permitted well that was drilled. That permitted well was drilled initially, and it was tested at like 28 parts per billion arsenic. They subsequently deepened it to 700 feet, I believe, and then retested it, and it was, at that point, still high for arsenic. And along the way, there was some other testing showing 13 parts per billion. There was one, at one point, there was testing that showed 4.5 parts per billion arsenic. I think Culligan did that test. And like I say, yeah, we had one, and then on one test, there was a high nitrate initially at 11 or 12 parts per million. State standard is 10 parts per million. Second test on that showed it at six, six parts per million.
So there's been a total of how many tests?
Total, I would say probably five, five to six tests for arsenic.
Throughout one calendar year?
Over a period of 2018, 2019, 2020.
Were these scattered throughout winter, summer?
Yeah, they were scattered all over.
They were?
Yeah.
And what is the quantity of the water coming out of this well? Would one well suffice for all eight lots? What is, how many gallons per minute are we getting out of this?
I'll have to check. I think it was like at 20 gallons per minute, I'm not sure, I'll have to check on that. It wasn't less than five gallons a minute or anything like that.
What's the requirement for having eight lots if they're only going to have one well?
For eight lots, then it would have to become a public water system. At that point, normally for a residential dwelling, we require, a legal well for one residential dwelling is one gallon a minute with storage, depending on the depth of the well. For this subdivision, we're requiring, obviously, each lot to have an individual well. If they were to become a one single source well for the eight-lot subdivision, then they'd have to go through the, and create a public water system at which point, 72-hour testing for yields to make sure the well can adequately produce whatever, hundreds of gallons that's needed for eight lots per day.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Actually, I have one, probably you need to come back here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you have an existing well that goes bad with arsenic, what are you doing right now? What are the processes?
An existing domestic well that goes bad?
Yeah.
If you test for domestic, we would require a retest first. If it still comes back bad, we would then advise the homeowner to deepen the well and maybe try to tap into another water source. A lot of times when they do that, then we would do a strata seal to seal off that shallower water, go deeper, and then re-sample. If it still comes back bad, then at point, we tell the homeowner, "Well, it's probably best now to try to drill the well on another section of the parcel." A lot of times in the foothill community, foothill areas where the wells are drilled, it's fractured rock that provides water. It's not a true groundwater table like in Sheridan where everybody taps in at 160 feet, you get water.
Right.
Foothill communities, you can have a well that's 150 feet producing perfect water. Your neighbor 100 feet away would go down 600 feet, have bad water. So chances are, we will tell them, you know, drill another well.
So I guess, for any existing wells, do you have treatment on them for the arsenic when you haven't found another solution? Does the county allow treatment on any of these wells?
We don't allow treatment. Homeowners may have their own treatment, but we don't recognize treatment units.
Okay, so the homeowners, once they find out have arsenic, may in fact have their own treatment system.
They may have their own treatment system, but it's no guarantee that treatment system works.
So the county only has control really over this with a subdivision? Also, you were talking about state wells and the state monitoring. Is there any way to make this project fall under those regulations, other than maybe a well system for all eight lots? In order that you would be convinced that the testing is being taken care of?
No.
No? All right, and then for Nikki, my understanding is there, the recommended conditions are, the well be drilled prior to cert of occupancy versus at the building permit stage, is that correct?
Yeah, I'd have to reread the, reread the condition. Right, prohibiting the issuance of any residential certificate of occupancy.
Well, is that typical for the county to issue a building permit before you know you have a water source?
I don't believe so.
So normally, there would have to be proof of adequate water before you could even approve the subdivision map?
Correct.
So you wouldn't normally have a situation where it would go all the way to certificate of occupancy, and the concern is, these lots could get sold to new buyers that wouldn't be aware of the potential issues.
Right.
And would have an expectation that they can build a house, it would have adequate water and sewer, and that potentially opens the county to exposure if we're approving maps with those kind of items in it, but then you can't actually build a residence on it.
So what's the, again, what's the county procedure in this case? Would you require eight wells be drilled to confirm that there's adequate water for eight lots?
I believe that's Environmental Health's position, is that at this point, given the levels of arsenic that they are requiring wells on each of the properties that show adequate water.
So that would be done prior to a final map, I'm assuming, or tentative map?
This is prior to tentative map, so this is part of the tentative map pre-application.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff? All right. At this time, if the appellant would come forward and provide us your comments.
If we could load the PowerPoint provided?
Yes, we can do that. Jeremy, if you could pull up the appellant's, there you go.
Great, thanks, EJ. Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Braden Chadwick. I'm Land Use Counsel for Dwayne and Jill Nash. They're lifelong Placer County residents. They live, actually, just down the road, on the same road from this parcel that is currently grazed by Dwayne Nash, who's been grazing the property for years and years. Point this at a certain place.
Does Jeremy have to push the button to make it go forward?
There we go. Okay, there we go. Okay, so, great, so basically, what we're going to be doing here, and I think this may answer some of your questions that you were posing, that I think that Nikki was having a hard time with too. So we're going to go through just very quickly the background timeline. Staff's done that already, we're going to just be, just cursorally go over it. We're going to dive into what the Placer County Code says about large lot subdivisions. Some of the provisions that were being quoted by staff include general subdivision requirements that are not specific to large lot subdivisions, which is a whole separate portion of the county code. We're going to talk about Placer County Code, what it deems adequate water supply. We're going to talk about the expert opinion from a PhD hydrogeologist who's California-licensed, and staff choosing to exclude from the hearing materials his reports and letters that you don't have in your packet. We're going to talk about staff overreach here and the meaning of underground regulations, and then eventually, we'll be asking you, the planning commission, to instruct staff to finish processing the application per the Placer County Code, and not according to an unwritten and unadopted policy. So again, what this, what we're going to be asking you to do is send this back to staff, have them finish processing this, going through the sequel process, and then bringing it back for eventual discussion and hopeful approval, but it will come back before this commission. So the timeline here is Dwayne Nash applied to subdivide his 80-acre property into eight separate 10-acre parcels, and this large lot subdivision is consistent with the existing zoning the county put on the property, as Nikki mentioned. No construction of homes is actually proposed, and I think that's kind of gotten lost in the clutter here. Homes could eventually be built there, and when the application was initially proposed to the county, county staff said, "Look, we need something to examine for sequel purposes, so let's pretend that you're going to plan on building homes on every parcel." What Dwayne Nash is actually after here is he wants to actually give these parcels to his children individually, but there's no, he's not a home developer, he's not anything like that, he's a rancher and he lives down, just down the road from here, but there's no homes that are actually proposed. However, homes could... However, homes could be built there. And so these are, these are important questions, and we don't dispute that at all. Mr. Nash submitted his application in 2017, and he's responded to several rounds of comments from county staff since three submittal, I think Nikki said it was four rounds, I think. And the only remaining issue left, after going through everything, and the subdivision has been, has gone through the wringer several times on a whole bunch of different issues, making sure it's compatible, the only remaining issue is this application for water supply on these parcels. So here's, here's kind of a larger version of that tentative map. You can see the parcels have been angled and they, they have taken on different shapes to adjust to county staff comments. There's a buffer around the property for neighbor purposes, for Fowler Nursery. So there's a lot of stuff, this map has, has actually been very well thought out of and, and gone through the wringer a few times. The, the context of this appeal is that the subdivision application has been deemed incomplete, as they said, for lack of providing information, which is interesting, because there's expert opinion, there's testing that's gone on, there is California licensed hydrogeology reports that have been submitted to the county. And of course, Andy Capania, who is, Dr. Andy Capania, who is the hydrogeologist, is here to testify for you today as well, showing that there is in fact adequate water supply as per the meaning of the county code. And so, again, this is not the approval, it will come back before you eventually. County staff basically are saying that the subdivision does not have adequate water supply because of slightly elevated levels of arsenic in the groundwater. They're not supportive, to use their language, of any solution including conditions of approval or simple filtration. And they continually maintain that the county code doesn't even allow it. And again, that's a mistake. Contrary to county staff's assertions, the proposed subdivision fully complies with the county code, especially with the proposed conditions of approval. So let's look at what the Placer County Code actually says. And again, this goes back to the large lot subdivision section where individual wells are absolutely allowed by the county code. For lots that are two and a half acres or larger, and again, these are 10 acre lots, the subdivider shall provide water for domestic use on each lot except where domestic water is to be provided by a separate well on each lot. So the first thing I think we need to digest is that for lots two and a half acres or larger, separate individual wells are absolutely allowed by the county code. Second is that as to lots of 200,000 square feet or more, roughly four and a half acres, the subdivider shall not be required to provide evidence that well water adequate for domestic use is available. Again, this is from the county code, right? Let's read it again. For lots four and a half acres or larger, the subdivider shall not be required by the county to provide evidence that well water adequate for domestic use is available except when the advisory agency determines that water yield by wells has been poor or unknown in the area. So if you have no information, right? Or the other wells drilled in the area or in the parcel show that more, one or more lots of 200,000 square feet or more may not be able to provide well water adequate for domestic use. Let's look at what the county had and what was submitted to the county at the time shortly after the application when they asked the question. If you look up here, you can see, you know, you have 100 gallons per minute, you have 30 gallons per minute, 30 gallons per minute, 60 gallons per minute. There's no problem with supplying water to this property, the county knew it. County nevertheless demanded that Mr. Nash drill a well on the property anyway, despite this. And there was a, there was a report handed in, a letter from Dr. Andy Capania saying, look, there's plenty of wells out there that the county currently has. There's plenty of wells out there that provide adequate evidence that water's fine, it's not a problem out there. There's plenty of water out there. And despite that, county staff demanded that a well be drilled. And so through a collaborative effort, you know, Mr. Nash decided to acquiesce to the county demands and went out there, county, and the county picked the spot and a well was drilled. At, at cost, at great cost to, to Mr. Nash anyway, even though he was not required to do it under the county code, as you can see. Okay? So despite that, a well was drilled. So what do we know? Well water, again, this is the county code, shall be deemed adequate for domestic use if the water, well or wells and any storage facility meets all applicable state and county health standards and can deliver 1,200 gallons in a four hour period, a four hour period at least once every 24 hours. Okay? So from that, we get, you have to have adequate quantity, right? And you have to have adequate quality. You have to be able to deliver water that's drinkable. Okay? No argument, of course. When evidence is required to show well water adequate for domestic use is available, such evidence shall be provided as follows. Again, this is the county code saying, here's the evidence you have to supply. The subdivider shall provide well water adequate for domestic use on not less than 10% of the lots which are subject to the evidence requirement. Not less than 10%. We're asking for eight lots, consistent with the zoning. So you need quality, you need quantity, and you need to show it on 10% of the lots, says the county code. The onsite well produces 27 gallons a minute. That's 6,480 gallons in that four hour period. Far in excess of the 1,200 gallons needed. That one well meets the 10, the 10% requirement for the eight lots because one well was drilled per county, with the county staff picking the spot, was drilled on that already. So quality, quantity, showing it on 10, 10% of the lots. So the proposed subdivision has adequate well water. And the water quality test conducted on unfiltered water drawn from the onsite well detected arsenic of 14 micrograms per liter. The standard's 10. A few years ago, it was 50. Okay? So this isn't, this isn't, this catastrophic arsenic, you know, catastrophe. The standard is 10 right now, and it came in at 14. Okay? This is slightly above the drinking water limit of 10. The well has tested at 4.5 micrograms, so the well's actually tested within the limits at, at different times of the year too, because it's been tested multiple times as, as Nikki was mentioning. So Dr. Capania, again, PhD, hydrogeologist, California licensed, provided a letter to county staff that was dated December 14th of last year. That letter explained that water could easily be treated to drinking water standards. And the state of California had approved over 100 different arsenic filters for precisely this purpose. The state water board has certified almost 100 different devices for this purpose alone because arsenic is prevalent in California and no well that you drill comes back 100% pristine unless you're going and drilling in the middle of Lake Tahoe or something. Okay? It, it just doesn't happen. You have some sort of contaminants in every single well you drill. Okay? And so that's why the state of California has authorized and certified almost 100 different devices for just this scenario. Okay? Now, this letter was submitted to the county, but staff chose not to include it in the staff report or your staff package. You don't have it. I brought copies of it if you'd like it. I'm going to submit it for the record. Dr. Capania also oversaw pilot tests on the existing well in November of 2020 using a state licensed filter device. And the arsenic level after that treatment was measured as non-detect. In other words, proof is that this works, right? There's quantity, absolutely, no one disputes that. The quality is there because, again, you have a test that shows you can deliver 100% quality, drinkable water that meets every state, county, and federal standard on that, on that map. And you can do it with a straightforward manner, with an off-the-shelf device, cheaply. Okay? This test result likewise was submitted to county staff and likewise, staff chose not to include it in your packet. So let's look at the conclusion from Dr. Capania. This conclusion states, "As the summary below demonstrates, arsenic is a common, naturally occurring constituent in groundwater throughout California, including in parts of Placer County. Treatment of impacted water sources to meet drinking water standards is a very common and straightforward practice. Based on treatability testing that has recently been conducted on groundwater provided from the well at the Fowler property and other groundwater sample results from the same well, proper well development and filtration would provide water for the proposed subdivision that does not exceed drinking water standards for arsenic." So I don't know what they're talking about when they say there's no evidence and there's no information provided and it's an incomplete application. It's there. It's absolutely there, and it's there from a state licensed hydrogeologist. There's expert testimony you'll hear in a few minutes that says the exact same thing. Okay? Arsenic's common, it's all over the place. And if you added, if you added iron and manganese to this, this map would be filled with everything. See, well water, which a vast majority of California, who doesn't live in the cities, actually has to use well water. That's why you have state-approved devices to, to fix the problem, to filter these things. And I can tell you, and Dwayne Nash can tell you, who lives on this same street, everyone around there uses filtration systems. It happens all the time. And for the county to pretend that it doesn't exist is, is crazy. Again, here is part of that list. There's a table that the state publishes that says, here are the approved devices to, to, to ameliorate this problem. And so there's, there's a partial image of that. But that was submitted to the county as well. So the county has this information. Results of that 2020 pilot test, you can see down here, arsenic came in on the pilot test at 4.5. So the well was actually meeting the state and federal standards right here on the, at this time. They ran it through the filter and it came back as no detect with that, with that off-the-shelf device. So let's go back to staff concerns. I don't want to, I don't want to dismiss staff's concerns because they're legitimate, right? You want to have safe drinking water, no one disputes that. Okay? So from conversations with staff and a review of the staff report, they came back with the exact same things, which is, they're worried about notice to any future owners of the property. Okay? Reasonable. They're worried about maintenance of these systems. Okay? If, landowners usually are pretty self-interested, they're going to, they're going to monitor their own devices, but they're worried about maintenance, so okay. And they're worried about enforcement power. So the applicant, Mr. Nash, has proposed three conditions of approval that were specifically designed to address each of those. And Nikki went through them, let's go through them real quick again. The first to deal with notice and the second is with, with the next two concerns. So the notice, the final subdivision map shall include a note that prohibits the issuance of certificate of occupancy until the owner drills a well, drills, drills a well, installs at a California-approved device, and then provides evidence to the county that the water meets all state and federal drinking standards. In other words, testing. Okay? We just talked about that. So the applicant is proposing testing. You drill a well, you attach the device, you test the well, and you provide that to the county environmental health. Okay? That's what, that's what that condition does. Second is landowners shall provide written disclosures of this water supply and water quality requirement to any purchaser of the lots. So are we noticed, are we concerned about future notice? That's a condition of approval. The homeowners association shall hire a qualified licensed contractor to annually inspect and maintain the water filter systems of each lot, replace the filter medium in each system per the schedule recommended by the manufacturer. Okay? And then submit a report to Placer County Environmental Health, certifying that the inspection has occurred, maintenance has been performed, and the well meets the tests. Now, a lot of hay was, was recently made about, well, this, they're not proposing, you know, this, that, or the other, they're not proposing testing to our satisfaction. Environmental health and the county never came back to us with any comments or, or, or other conditions or tweaks to these. They just said, we're going to throw, we're going to throw your application in the garbage unless you appeal. They didn't come back and say, hey, could you fix this one? This kind of addresses our concern, but let's change it to say this. We, we have no comments on these. Staff said, we are literally deactivating your application and we're going to chuck it in the garbage unless you appeal the planning commission. And that's why we're here today. So again, Mr. Nash is not, not out pounding the table or anything. He's been trying to work with the county, and the county's not trying to work with him, and that's the problem, I think, here. So his proposed solution addresses those concerns. Lot purchasers will receive notice if there, if there are any. I mean, they're going to be his kids, but lot purchasers in the future will receive notice. Treatment systems will be installed before occupancy. If they want it before a building permit, please talk to us, staff. Right? I mean, this, these are not set in stone. Treatment systems be inspected annually, filters changed, and, and, and maintained per the manufacturer specification by the manufacturer. And it's hard to see how through these enforceable conditions of approval, the county will have that enforcement mechanism that they're saying that they want so badly, that the supervisors, by the way, have not given them. And that's part of the problem here. The county code doesn't provide them the authority that they want. And that's, that's, that's part of the problem. So county staff is now refusing to process the application. They said, we're not going to, we're not going to process it, we're done. So there's that June 5th, 25th letter where the conditions were, were presented to the county. County staff says, you're incomplete, and you haven't established, you've given us any evidence that you, that you can provide water, again, which I don't understand. And so this appeal, this appeal had to be filed. So county staff needs to proceed with the application and processing it. The applicant, so Mr. Nash has provided evidence that adequate domestic water supply on at least 10% of the lots as required by county code section 1608, 040, E3C, Romanet 1. And accordingly, the county has to proceed with processing the application. Again, it's going to be, go through the sequel process and it'll come back for approval, and we can talk about conditions of approval in the meantime, but they have to process it. You know, Mr. Nash deserves to have his application processed and decisions made by decision-makers, not by county staff. And their refusal to even allow the sequel process to commence after four years is contrary to the intent of the county code, and it's an abuse of discretion. Now, the county, there's a lot of verbiage, I'm sorry, I apologize for it, but their staff report basically presents arguments that are contrary to the county code. And, and part of this is the conditions of approval are used in every discretionary approval, as you know, in the county. So this is not a, a reasonable objection to say that they don't have any authority here or that you can't, you can't, you know, impose a condition of approval on, as proposed by the applicant. You absolutely can. And he'd agree to different timing of well drilling. He'd agree to a lot of these things, but staff has never, ever even tried to work with him. County staff report admits that staff has overridden the county code for large rural subdivisions. That they're purposely ignoring the county code's treatment of large lot subdivisions for water supply purposes as a matter of their policy. The, you know, county policy is, is exhibited in the county code. And if you're going to twist the county code or you're going to impose your own different requirements, that's up to the supervisors to change it if they want to. They, the supervisors are the policymakers, it's not staff. So the county policy does not, the, the staff policy doesn't make sense in the context of rural subdivisions. You're outlawing rural subdivisions with this policy. And you, and you heard that. I mean, the, two of you asked the, the exact right question is, what is the remedy if this, if your policy prevails here, staff? What's the remedy? Especially in rural Placer County where you have contaminants. And whether it's manganese, or whether it's iron, or whether it's pH, or whether it's slightly elevated arsenic, you've out, and you've now outlawed essentially large lot subdivisions in rural Placer County. Because you can't, you can't justify, especially for example, Mr. Nash can't justify putting in a $3 million water treatment plant for eight parcels that he's not even planning on selling. Right? So now he, now he, you deprived him the use of this, and the county code provides for, for two different tiers of, of, of analysis. There's the small lot subdivision tier, and there's the large lot subdivision tier. And the county code provides for different standards for large lot subdivisions. And staff has explicitly rejected the county code's large lot policy and is enforcing its own. Such that subdivider is proposing individual wells on large lots, have to drill wells on every single lot. You saw the county code doesn't, doesn't say that. It says 10%, unless there's a, a really good reason to force them to drill in every lot. And for staff to say, you have to drill in every single lot, Mr. Nash, so we can then reject you after you spend $100,000 drilling wells because you have slightly elevated arsenic and we're not going to let you treat it? That's, that's no solution, right? It's not in the county code and it's being enforced by county staff. It's an abuse of discretion is what it is. Individual treatment systems are allowed by large lot subdivisions. Staff report from October 7th mischaracterizes the county code, and they imply that individual treatment systems aren't allowed for large lot subdivisions. The county recognizes, and you saw this before, the county recognizes that for lots of two and a half acres or more, the subdivider is not required to be a legal water supplier. They don't have to supply water for two and a half acres or more. The county code says you can have, you can have an individual lot. A, if they're, if they're over four and a half acres, you have to prove water. But B, if they're two and a half acres or more, they can have a well. That's what it says. The quote is right there. "The subdivider shall provide water for domestic use on each lot except where domestic water is to be provided by a separate well on each lot." So the county code anticipates and allows that for large lots, the individual lot owner may be responsible for their own water well rather than relying on a centralized water purveyor. Okay? Like, like, over, like, like in my house, I have PCWA, for example. Like, like, uh, over, like, like in my house, I have PCWA, for example. That's a purveyor, it's a large water purveyor, right? So, individual treatment systems are allowed for large lot subdivisions, and this, and I really apologize for this, the tiny type on this, but I, we have to go into it because staff brought it up. They, the county code, um, they're saying the county code, um, say that prohibits individual treatment systems when used by lot, it does prohibit individual treatment systems when used by large water purveyors, but not for an individual lot owner. And if you think about it, that makes sense. PCWA shouldn't be able to force people to drill wells on their lots and then include that in their system, right? Because if you have a subdivision that, that has, that's big and has a bunch of houses and stuff, PCWA can't force them to drill wells and then say, "That's part of our system," right? And so, here it says, and this is the county code, it says, "Priority of serving entities." Okay, so you have to read this in context, okay? So, we're talking about the priority of serving entities, right? The legal entity, again, supplying the water, again, if you are a water supplier, this is what then applies to you. Legal entity supplying the water shall be determined in accordance with, for the following priority listing. So, you have to go through, what's the priority? First, you go to PCWA, then you go down and you have this list of people who supply, entities who supply water, and then it says, "For mutual water companies or corporations," okay? And homeowner associations, you guys are not allowed to be water suppliers. And if you're a water supplier, you can't use individual water treatment systems, if you're a water supplier. Now, county, the, the staff is taking that tiny little section right there, pulling it out of context and sticking it up in the, in a different part of the code, and saying, "Right here, that applies to everybody." And that's not true. Again, what are we talking about in the context of the actual code? It says priority of serving entities, these entities that are water suppliers. These guys purvey water, okay? And you can't have an individual, you can't rely, if you're a water purveyor, PCWA can't rely on me having to, to go and buy my own filtration system if they're my, if they're my supplier. Makes sense. It doesn't make sense how staff's reading it, though, by saying, "You know what? For, uh, for individual wells, you can't treat your system, you can't treat your well." It's craziness, okay? This provision does not apply to the project, okay? Each lot is supplying its own water. We're not having one well, we're gonna have eight wells, okay? Each lot is supplying its own water, and the subdivider is not a water supplier. This doesn't apply unless you're a water, again, it says it right here in the code, unless you're a water-serving entity. So, provision, it makes sense for large subdivisions and hundreds of homes, okay? For the home builders taking on the legal water supplying entity role, but when it's not, when it's an individual water, individual well, it doesn't make sense at all. So, where domestic water is to be provided by a separate well on each lot, you can do whatever you want. It's your lot, it's your well, you can treat it. So, in this case, Mr. Nash isn't proposing to be a water supplier. He's not. This is a rural, large lot, ten-acre lot subdivision where the lots would be conveyed as bare land, and the applicant is not proposing to be a legal entity supplying water. And there's no prohibition of individual treatment systems of anything for individual lots in the county code. They can't point to it. It's not there. So, county staff's abusing this discretion. Staff report points to several code sections that grant the county some discretion when evaluating water supply for a proposed subdivision, but staff takes this limited, this limited discretion that they have, and they use it as a license to formulate their own policy. And they use it to override what the county code actually says. That's not right. Again, policy comes from the supervisors. The other ones who, they're the ones who, they're the authors of the code, and if they wanna change it, it's up to them, it's not up to staff. And staff says, "Look, we don't have the power we want." Well, the, you know, I'm sorry, the supervisors haven't given you that power. Maybe, maybe on purpose. Staff may not implement unwritten policies that contradict the code, or contradict the evidence in the record. Like, you can't ignore the evidence of, of reports and tests on the site for water that show that you can provide water that's, that, that meets the requirements. You can't ignore a, a state-licensed hydrogeologist in his reports, and then pretend that there's no information that's been provided. You can't ignore that. You know, staff reports, uh, points to county code provision that says that the domestic water shall meet all local and state standards for quality and quantity, um, and that water is safe for domestic use must be approved by the local and/or state health department. These are state-approved devices to do exactly that, and they do exactly that. We have the test results. So, reasonable exercise of this discretion should be ensuring that all the devices are state-approved. That would be a reasonable exercise of discretion, that if you use a device, make sure it's approved by the state water board for this purpose. But staff's implication that it has the power to approve or deny everything. Now, you know what? The state has approved a hundred devices, but we staff are gonna make up a rule on our own, you can't use any of them. That's an abuse of discretion. They don't have that power to say that. It's a blanket power to prohibit all individual treatment systems as a matter of their policy, of their policy? You don't see that in the county code, it's not there. They're making it up. The treatment system is state-approved, it's been shown to be effective through testing of this well on this property with that water. A PhD hydrogeologist licensed in California has provided expert evidence that the water is treatable to drinking water standards and, and it is, is easily done. County staff has provided no evidence that contradicts anything, that contradicts the expert at all. County decisions that contradict all available evidence are considered abuses of discretion, and that's what you have here. This type of policy requires supervisor approval. So, the county policy is what we call an underground regulation. What does that mean? It means it's a regulation that, that applies generally, which is what they're doing, and is not adopted as a valid regulation through prescribed procedures, through the supervisors, right? The California Supreme Court case based, there's one, uh, this is the, the kind of seminal case here, said that the, the Supreme Court declared an unwritten policy is invalid because it's not legally adopted. That's what we have here. To change the code, supervisors have to pass an ordinance and change the code to amend that code section, which they can do if they want, but they haven't, they haven't done that. And so, the application has to be processed according to the code as it's written. The county's policy that, that prohibits individual lot owners from using water filtration system is not authored by the board, and it's an underground regulation. So, last couple slides, there's some policy considerations here. First is that it'd be detrimental to Placer County. Why? Large portions of the county, and the state generally, but the county especially, are rural. They have naturally occurring arsenic, okay? And many other constituents, iron, manganese, uh, pH, that exceed drinking water standards, but they're easily treatable, okay? If staff's underground policy is allowed to stand, it would effectively outlaw rural subdivisions across large areas of the county, because you can't, I mean, you can't compete with that. You can't say that every well, I mean, and I'll let Dr. Copagna tell you now how rare it is that you drill a well and it's pristine water with no contaminants ever. Doesn't happen. So, the only feasible subdivisions in these remote areas with any contaminants at all would be huge developments with hundreds of houses, because those are the only ones that could afford to build a public water system. You can't do it for eight lots, okay? Especially if you're not selling them. You can't do it for eight lots, okay? The policy has, would have this unattended effect on the character of the county by discouraging these, these large lot subdivisions and allowing only large, multi-hundred densely-packed developments, because that's what it would take to, to actually make this pencil. So, in conclusion, staff's chosen to deem the application incomplete, because it's, it's pushing a policy of outlawing individual treatment systems. As stated in the staff report, environmental health isn't supportive of individual water treatment systems, because there's no enforcement mechanism to ensure safe domestic drinking water, they say. You know, I guess we won't tell the other, you know, tens of thousands of wells that are out there. The county code allows individual treatment systems for subdivisions of large lots. It does. Mr. Nash has proven that water on site, that he has it, it has the right quantity, is treatable, and he can deliver quality water, and he's proven that based on ten percent of the lots, like the county code says. He's proposed reasonable conditions of approval, and he's open to talking to staff about changes to him if they want that. Or staff hasn't talked to him about it. He's provided that for safe drinking water for any future owner of the property, and environmental health's lack of support, you know, for individual treatment systems isn't valid grounds to say, "We won't process your application." Their reliance on their own discretion under the code doesn't allow for limitless power to formulate their own policies. You still have to follow what the code says. So, Mr. Nash's ask is this. Find that the adequate water supply has been established and instruct staff to finish processing the application per the county code, and not according to an unwritten and unadopted policy. Again, Mr. Nash has proven that he has adequate supply, he has adequate quality, and he's done that on ten percent of the lots, and that's what the county code requires. If you really wanna go back, it doesn't even require him to prove anything at all, because his lots are, are ten acres. So, I'd like to introduce Dr. Andy Copagna, he has a few words to say, and then, uh, obviously, I'll be, and Dr. Pan will be available for questions that you have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, here and not here. Um, as, uh, Mr. Chadwick said, I'm Andrew Copagna, um, hydrogeologist. I've got over thirty years of experience working all over California. Just a few key points I wanna make. You saw the map up there that I had provided for this presentation, that arsenic is pretty much ubiquitous. You hear about it a lot in the paper, in the news. That's the reason why the state, not just for arsenic, for a number of contaminants, has approved and certified, um, certain treatment systems, so that when those things show up, property owners, water suppliers, county environmental health staff can say, "These are already approved, they're certified, they're off the shelf." You can order some of them online from Home Depot. You can use the Culligan Man, like is referenced, um, but they're, they're common everyday things. One of the things that struck me during the presentation by staff and by Mr. Chadwick is, um, and, and Mr. Woodward, Commissioner Woodward brought this up, really only discussing this because it's a subdivision of eight lots. This was an individual property, so, for example, you saw all those, the map with all the wells around there that had well production, eight GPM, fifty GPM, thirty GPM. Nobody knows what the arsenic concentration is there, except the driller and the homeowner. And the drillers in this area, I've worked with many of them, are very diligent, because they, they'll pretty much tell you when they come out, "Your water's gonna have high iron, you're gonna have low pH," um, and they want to address that, because they'll sell you a filter, right? For the money. But county staff, county environmental health, for individual properties, or if this was only two or three lots, would have no clue what the water quality is, because it's not, um, regulated. So, the question about, "Well, we don't know if they'll maintain this, we don't know if they'll do that," it's in the homeowner's own self-interest. I mean, if, if someone, you buy a lot and someone says, "There's arsenic here, there's a problem, you're gonna test, you're gonna fix your filters. If you're not, it'd be a little bit of Darwinism," but it's in people's self-interest to follow up on that notification when they have an understanding that there's a potential issue. And there are, I, I can tell you that throughout the foothills, from Tulare County through Butte County, on hundreds of wells and properties I've worked on, there are hundreds of treatment systems, whether it's, uh, pH adjustment, whether it's an iron or manganese filter, uh, green sand filters, whether there are arsenic filters or nitrate filters, um, uh, water softeners, um, because your hardness is too high. They're all over the place, people use them all the time. It's not a situation where it's unique and not understood. Um, there's a whole industry around these things, and the state certifies hundreds of these things so that they can be used off the shelf without having to go through individual permits and approval processes to verify their work. And so, those are the points I wanna make, is that, and, and, excuse me, and the final point I wanna make is, in the state regulations, um, the Senate Bill six ten and the modifications to the California Water Code that that justified, if this was a large subdivision, if this was five hundred lots or larger, if this was a commercial facility with two hundred and forty square feet or more, um, if it was a hotel with more than five hundred rooms, you're required by state law to prepare what's called a water supply assessment, to demonstrate adequate water supply. In the state code, in the state law, that water supply assessment is prepared as part of the sequo analysis. It's not prepared to demonstrate a project application's complete and there's adequate water. It's prepared as part of the environmental review of the process, because the issues with respect to water treatment, any chemical residuals that that might generate, traffic related to that, are things that need to be reviewed in the sequo analysis. So, to require demonstration of supply before you get to that process as part of deem an application complete is premature, because you don't know all the issues, and you don't know what methods are gonna be used. So, those are the key points that I wanted to make, to demonstrate that the process here can ensure that the homeowners are safe. It's nothing unique, it's, it occurs everywhere, um, and the neighbors right next door are probably treating for arsenic today, because we know there's arsenic here, there's probably arsenic at one of those other wells around there, um, and if the people know it, if the drillers tested and told them when they put their wells in, they're probably treating for it, and they're probably just fine. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, question of the appellant.
I have a question.
Okay.
You said that the applicant lives across the street. Does he have a filtration system on his property, where he has his own personal home?
Uh, for, for Mr. Nash? Uh, he does, he lives, he lives down the street, but he does have a, a filtration system, yes.
Has that water been tested?
Uh, yes, he has tested it. And it comes back with no detect for any of the contaminants or arsenic.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Other commissioners?
Question for, I think probably for our council, and then possibly one for, uh, for applicant's council, but, um, are we really being...
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry?
Is your mic on?
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll lean forward. Is, are we really being asked tonight to determine that an adequate water supply has been established?
No, I think the issue you're being asked is whether or not, uh, conditions of approval can be provided that potentially can make an adequate water supply.
Right.
Remissible.
Okay, so, for applicant council, then, would you agree that Mr. Nash's ask really is that we ask the staff to allow this to go through the sequo process, and ultimately perhaps come back to us with a third-party review of all the circumstances and situations which have been described very well to I, to us tonight on both sides of this issue, and at that time, with something perhaps more concrete, and with a third-party review, we might be able to make a more informed decision?
Uh, I, I think that, that Mr. Nash would be satisfied with that. I think the only issue that, that would remain, if, if that were the course that the, the commission chose to go, is that this ultimately is a determination of, of, you know, essentially what the, what the code says, right? Because staff is, is going to maintain their position that, for example, you can't use any filtration device, i- is my fear with that. And, and therefore, you can't have, you can never have adequate water on this parcel, ever. My, I, I think the issue that, that Mr. Nash should have is, 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 look, I've proven, and, and the county doesn't dispute this, that there's adequate quantity of water. I have an expert that tells you that I can provide adequate quality of water, that, that staff doesn't have an expert that says, says the opposite. And I've tested on ten percent of the wells. I've fulfilled my three-prong requirement for adequate water supply for the parcels. And so, the fear would be that staff, it goes back to staff, and four more years pass, that, that we can't agree on anything, and then we're back here, um, again. So, I think that's, that's the only ques... So, again, what Mr. Nash really wants is, he wants his application to be processed, and that's what this appeals about, is if you send it back to staff saying, "Staff, finish processing the application," um, is, is, is the main ask there.
If I could just add to what Braden's comment is, if, I, I think the, the reason that all the parties are here is, this, there is significant cost in moving forward with environmental review, and if this is, in fact, a project killer, it's something that would be important to know upfront. If, if there is a path through, that's great, but I, I, I'm guessing the applicant doesn't wanna go through this process if ultimately, this would come before the planning commission, and there would be a result that, you know what? We don't think conditions of approval are gonna make sense here. So, I guess this is somewhat of a preview of, is this something that's gonna potentially make it through down the road, or is this something that, that is a significant issue that needs to be dealt with here?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. The only question I would have is, will we find additional facts, um, or perhaps, uh, an additional pathway that might get to yes on this eighty-acre parcel, uh, that we have not yet filed, as a, with a third-party review? You know, I, I don't know.
Sure, and, and we can deal this more when it gets to deliberation, but another option is also to continue this and request further information.
Okay. Question of Nikki. If the applicant was to come in and just do a small lot subdivision, four lots, and they drilled a well and got a building permit, would they be allowed to do that?
I, I, um, I believe for minor land divisions, so four lots and under, is it the same requirement you...
Same requirement for minor land is, uh, something four lots, uh, two or three wells.
Okay.
One well first, that they're...
And if he...
And also the testing of all contaminants, just through that...
But is it, is it on all four lots, then, four resultant lots?
Yeah, in order to, to determine that part of the water...
So, could, with the well there, could he come in for a building permit today, build a house, and move forward?
Yeah, uh, so, today, if a new building permit were to come in, uh, the required testing with your department would be...
Um, they would not, they would not accept that well as...
Actually...
Hey, Mohan, Mohan.
Could you come to the mic?
Come up, come up.
Only because we have people, we have people, uh, listening online that won't be able to hear you.
Correct.
If the applicant were to come in today, just on this eighty-acre parcel and wanna build one house, and we have a well that produces arsenic above the MCL, without treatment, we would state that, that well is not adequate to provide, not, does not provide adequate water for the house. We would require him to either deepen the well, in which case he already has, then we would require him to drill a well on another portion of the parcel, see if he can get water meeting, meeting standards.
So, you would not issue a building permit? I thought building permits were pretty much issued by right. I wasn't aware that they went through environmental health when you got a building permit.
Right, so they are signed off by each department prior to approval.
They are, okay, all right. So what if you get to a point where you can't find any water that doesn't have these contaminants? Basically, you're saying you can't develop this land, you can't put a building permit on, is that correct?
Right, you would need either a public well or water from some sort of water district, which are significant.
Or drill a well in any of those parcel.
Can I follow up with something you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
You said you asked for another well to be drilled because this one wasn't proving quality water. And so on the parcel, if they drew, drilled another well, would that, and let's say it proved to be quality water coming out of that, would that allow the eight parcels to be developed? Or are you asking in fact for eight individual wells to be drilled and proven that the quality of water coming out of those will work? Which of those is?
For this one, because that one well came up positive, we will then, because they have not demonstrated adequate water, we will require wells on each individual parcel to be drilled.
Okay. Other questions of clarification?
Chair, I have a question. Randy, this is for you. If if the county is asking for potable water, what would it cost the applicant to have put in a system yesterday, a year ago, to do something like that that would have given quality water to environmental health?
To all, to all the all the parcels or say the individual?
Even just the individual, or just right now you have one well that's not potable. What would it have cost to have put in a treatment that would have been there today? You guys could have came here and said, look, we have adequate water, we can go out there, have a party and drink right now.
Yeah.
Water.
About fifteen hundred bucks? Some of the, like the Culligan system and stuff are very, very inexpensive.
Why hasn't the applicant, and as a landowner, large landowner, I would have probably spent that before I paid my attorneys at five hundred bucks an hour to go put in a system to prove to environmental health and all of us that you guys have adequate water?
Well, we we have though, and we did hook up.
But it's not there right now.
Well, because they they say that's not good enough. They say no matter, even if you, even if we did a year ago, go and purchase the Culligan system and test it from there, which which we did, right? And you have the you have the test results we put up there, the county has them. County says, you are not allowed to treat your water. Your water has to be pristine from the well without treatment, which again, maybe Dr. Kapten, you could opine on how often that happens, which is maybe never. You can't treat your well, ever. And so, which is why, which is why I keep asking, well, well, county, what are you doing with the provision that says if you have a lot, for lots over four and a half acres, the subdivider shall not be asked to prove this? Where did that go? How about the the pointing to a place in the county code for large lot subdivisions that says, you know what, individual water treatment systems for the subdivider are illegal or cannot be used? You don't see that here. And so my, so my, my, again, I think the question for staff, and and the question needs to be put to staff on this, is where do you see that requirement? And it sure as heck isn't in the the PCWA section of the of the county code. It should be in the subdivision section where you're talking about large lot subdivisions that you A, have to prove this, which again, it says you don't have to prove it. Or B, if you do out and prove it on on ten percent, that's good enough. If you could prove you have quality, quantity, and you've done it on ten percent of the lots. And again, here, we have quantity, we proven through testing and through expert testimony that there is quality, quality water can be supplied easily, inexpensively. And it's been proven on ten percent of the lots. So anyway, that's.
Thank you. I have another question for environmental health.
Okay. Well, no, there's still questions and clarification.
Nikki, if if it was provided today, that there was a filtration system out there in a little house or however they want to protect it from the environment, would it have satisfied environmental health's requirements to move forward?
Yeah, and I think what environmental health is asking for is testing and drilling on each resultant lot. So that was part of their first submittal comments, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mohan. But if all of that testing came back showing potability and quality, then we would, they'd have enough to advance forward in the SEQA process.
But if this, but if this system, if this well, according to this, satisfies the requirements for all eight lots to provide quality and quantity, if they had a system out there today for that one well, would it be adequate to go forward? Or would it have gone forward?
So environmental health's position is that one well with a water treatment system would not satisfy that requirement of well water being adequate for domestic use because of the concerns about those individual water systems and inspection of them. And maybe Mohan or Wes, one of you can speak to environmental health's position with respect to why they're not interested in water treatment systems or don't believe water treatment systems can be used?
I'm Wes, for environmental health. You know, the crux of it, and Braden mentioned it, is our interpretation of the code is that individual water treatment systems are not allowed on individual lots. And that's kind of at the core of where we're at. The discussion of public water system and one well serving the property. So in order for one well to serve that property, it would be a state-regulated small water system, have to meet those requirements. That hasn't been proposed. If if it was proposed, we could look at it for sure, certain.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I see.
I have a question for for our county. Is, are they being held to a standard that they shouldn't be? And I think this is a question we need to get clarified. It's been mentioned a number of times. I like our interpretation of large lot subdivision with two hundred thousand square feet. Can you help me with that?
Sure, yeah. No, and it's a, it's a point that I think has gotten somewhat muddled through the the presentations. So the code section states that if you have a lot that's two hundred thousand square feet or more, the subdivider is not required to prove, provide evidence of well water adequate for domestic use. Except when the advisory agency determines well, water yield by wells has been poor or is unknown in the area, or other wells drilled in the area or on the parcel show that one or more lots of two hundred thousand square feet or more may not be able to provide well water adequate for domestic use. So you don't have to provide proof of water unless you have one of those situations that water, water is unknown or there's other indications of bad water in the area. And that's what environmental health has decided, based on those two factors, there was water yield, there was unknown. So then we move down to that section of what do you need to do to provide evidence of well water that's adequate for domestic use? And those are the three components that Mr. Chadwick had brought up. Then the subdivider needs to provide well water adequate for domestic use on not less than ten percent of the lots. The health department shall determine the location of each well, and the advisory agency may require additional wells. So that's why you have environmental health requesting one well to be dug and drilled to meet that ten percent requirement. Now, when that well was dug and indicated that arsenic was above the elevated levels, then from environmental health's perspective, you don't have well water that's adequate for domestic use. So then you fall into, what do you do from there? And that's why environmental health is, they are now putting forth the request that there be wells on each site that indicate potable water because that ten percent did not show adequate domestic use from their perspective. Does that make sense?
Can we play that out a little bit?
Sure.
And might need more comments. So if they dig a well on each site and half of them are good, can they build on the half that are good? Or can they subdivide those lots that prove to be, to have adequate water? And and how do we play that out?
Yeah, and I guess I would ask environmental health to speak on that as to what they would do in that kind of situation.
So in theory, if he drilled wells on each lot, four of them came up good, then the applicant has the choice of proposing a four lot subdivision. And figure the property lines, they have each well that produces good water to be on those lots, and the project goes forward.
Other questions for clarification?
Mr. Chairman, may I respond just to that very quickly?
Who, who's, oh, yes.
I'm sorry. No worries. I think that the the issue here is, is number, number one, for the two hundred thousand square feet or more, subdivider shall not be required to provide this evidence, right? Unless the water yield, in terms of number of gallons per minute, again, the water yield is unknown or poor in the area, right? And again, that was not the case, okay? This well was drilled for, because the county demanded it, contradicting what the county code says. But the other, the other issue I think is that what what environmental health is proposing is they're saying, go spend another hundred thousand dollars in addition to the seven hundred thousand dollars you spent over the last four years. Go spend another hundred thousand dollars, drill eight more wells on the site, and we're going to come back and tell you the exact same thing, which is, you can't, we refuse to let you treat any of these wells. And if they have arsenic in them, that's too bad. Even if it's just barely over the limit, even if it's easily treatable, you'll go spend another hundred grand, and then we'll still tell you your application is incomplete.
Okay.
So it's, that's, it's a non-starter from, I think stemming from the misunderstanding of environmental health staff of their own code.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Woodward?
I have another comment. If these are, just kind of throwing this off the top of my head, if I was a landowner, and I'm just here to give these to my kids, couldn't he just do lot line adjustments without having to go through all this approval and give these lots to his kids if this is his final intention? And not have to go through this whole application process? I mean, it looks to me like, yeah, I want to give them to my kids, but maybe we could sell it. So that's kind of like, I would think our hands would be tied is, what does he really want to do with these lots? If he wanted to give them away, I would think, with my experience, I could just do lot line adjustments and give them to my kids and not have to do all this. Would that be correct?
Yeah, in this situation, we have one lot correct. So, you know, there is an entitlement process, whether you're doing a parcel map, creating four lots or a subdivision, you know, that's creating.
But if it wasn't called, if it wasn't called a subdivision, and he has six kids and he wants to divide this out and give it to his kids equally or whatever, would he have to go through all this?
Yeah.
Still?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, if there are no more questions of the applicant's staff, do you have another question?
If he can get me a well builder to do eight wells for a hundred thousand dollars, I'd like his number.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would just to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? No, they're not. So with that, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Mr. Nash? Are you going to say something, Nathan? Okay.
I, I mean, I've been thinking about this for a while and I just don't feel good about bad water in dividing lots. I I do heed, you know, public health, their recommendation. I think we need to establish good quality water from somewhere on the property. And and that's kind of what I'm wrestling with. I I don't feel good about dividing a lot where possibly one of these lots cannot have access to water. And I know it can be treated. I I totally understand what's being said. It can't be enforced. And so I don't feel good on this side of approving that kind of situation. But that's part of my discussion.
Because there's no, right, so I kind of tailing off of you, that seems like there's no entity that's going to be there to enforce this. If Mr. Nash is gone and decides to move or whatever, who's going to enforce this for the people who have bought these lots if they're not really intended for his children? That's why I'd ask that question. Well, if they're really truly intended for your children, you know, why go through this? Or if somebody like you or me or whoever down the street goes and buys one of these lots, who's there to enforce it? Is there, it doesn't seem like there's an agency, or if there has to be an agency, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like there's nothing in place right now that says, we're going to make sure that these eight lots have water, whether they're his children or your nephew or whoever. So that's my concern.
I I do want to add that I don't like that I'm hearing that, you know, the applicant isn't getting feedback. It would be nice to know how to complete this application. And and we we've got some answers here. I think establishing, there are more options that came up today about establishing quality water and and pursuing those or understanding what needs to be done would be helpful, too.
If I could probably piggyback a little bit on this, first of all, it seems to me that this, although we're not really being asked to make a, perhaps a major decision here, it is somewhat precedent setting. And so the question would be, is twenty acceptable next time? And is it twenty-five next time? And is it thirty next time? And once we do this for one person, unless we do it for everybody, obviously the circumstances will be different at the time. But so it becomes precedent setting. I do have a question, though. Perhaps we should ask the supervisors ultimately, through the county staff, to determine if in fact they would like to pursue a change to code which clearly says that either we will or will not accept some type of individual treatment option inside of this county. It appears as though that type of option exists across the state in some place or another. I mean, it seems like there is precedent outside, outside of the county for this. So perhaps that's a decision that the supervisor should take up. Because the thing is, you know, this is an eighty eighty acre parcel, but there's eight hundred thousand acres at stake here potentially, I don't know. But it, you know, so maybe this is a decision that supervisors ultimately should take up that perhaps should be become part of the code. I don't know.
At what point in time was the arsenic levels lowered from twenty to ten or fifty to ten? Or why is it lower now and people have been drinking this water? I know people who've lived out there for more than two generations and have had arsenic in their water and lived to be healthy and strong for eighty years. So why all of a sudden now, or what state law or what has changed this to make it such a lower threshold? And is this threshold too low? I don't know.
Any other? Any other comment?
Yeah, I'm kind of, still kind of thinking it through, but we see a lot of four-by-four subdivisions and other subdivisions even in this area. And so I guess what I'm hearing is that all those subdivisions have proven that they have quality water. And so we've been consistent, I guess, is what I think I'm hearing. And so this would be a change in the process. And that's what I think you're saying in terms of precedent setting.
Right.
And the other thing that, when you look at the conditions that were proposed, and I'm kind of agreeing here that, you know, the conditions are good and the wording is fine. But if somebody forgets to bother with the filter or the homeowners association kind of over time forgets to replace the filters in the water system, then, you know, usually the county's condition process is based on complaints. And so who's going to complain? And I think what that indicates is that there is really kind of a lack of ability to account for the quality water, given there, even though there are systems there in terms of, you know, the end result, when they, when you have these lots built up and and people kind of forget, or the homeowners association forgets to follow that condition. So at any rate, I think there's a concern there in terms of the credibility or accountability of the process.
Okay, other? I kind of like, or I do like the idea of going to the board, because one of the question, we know there are individuals in the county using treatment systems right now for arsenic. They're existing, it's happening right now. And I think the issue environmental health may have is, we don't have a way to monitor that, take care of it. So it would be interesting to know if the board is willing to look at individual treatment systems and then setting up a system where the the county does have some authority over those, some monitoring ability over those, which would then resolve this issue, would also resolve issues with existing homeowners that are in a situation that needs to be resolved.
I agree with the chairman.
Thank you, Larry.
But if there's people who live out there now and are not concerned about it and have not been concerned about it, that's why I guess I ask, why is that threshold lower when these people have been out here for 80 years and all of a sudden now we're putting the strings on to tighten it up?
Well, I think the state of California has done that on a number of issues that tightened them up pretty tight. And that is true for all public water systems, I know.
Okay.
But I also know the treatment systems are pretty effective and it'd be interesting to, to get some direction from the supervisors if they're interested in allowing individual treatment systems. And obviously there would have to be the, uh, assurances that, uh, the public health is protected. But I think in these situations, a public system, uh, is expensive. A treatment system for eight lots is going to be pretty darn expensive versus individual system. So I don't know. You wouldn't want to make a motion on this. I, I.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Larry?
I, no, I agree completely as well. I, I think that at this point, it's a policy issue.
It is.
Do we want to allow these people to develop these kinds of systems with some guarantees that the system is going to function and be placed on a monthly yearly basis or whatever is appropriate way? And, and let them decide if, yeah, that's what they think of the future holds. And I, I have to think that as, as time goes, even wells that, uh, we are now using for small subdivisions and individual lots and homes is going to deteriorate because you can't continue to live on the land and pour gasoline and stuff out of dirt and expect it not to find its way into the water. It's just going to happen over time. So I think we, I think it, I agree with the chairman. I think we refer to the board and say is this is a policy issue and this is what they get paid the big money to do. What, how do they want to treat it? Do we want to regulate them on a business or do we want to create rules that they can live with?
Is that a motion?
Um, I mean, I'm glad that packages this as a motion, but I.
Okay.
But before I do that, I, I am, um, Clayton, I'm sorry, when you're ready. I mean, really, you guys have to talk, but so is this, should we deny the appeal? Um, however, we want to make sure that we give a, an opening to the applicant to reassert their desire to move forward if in fact the policy that the board puts forth, if we go to the board, authorizes this type of thing. So how would that motion be put together, do you think?
Yeah, so, um, a couple of thoughts. Uh, this commission has the authority to deny the appeal, grant the appeal or continue it. Um, I believe there, um, this commission could deny this appeal without prejudice, which would allow, uh, the applicant to, I guess, bring this issue up again down the road if they so chose. Um, a, a denial of the appeal would have, uh, appeal rights within itself to the board of supervisors. So, um, that is a method that would get before the board of supervisors, although it would be with another appeal process and the appeal fee and those, those associated items. Um, outside of that, um, yeah, I, I guess those are probably the, all of the options that come to mind as potential, uh, possibilities.
And the, so the continuance would move it to the board or could move it to the board?
So a continuance keeps it here with the planning commission, but would delay it then.
All right. Well, then I, I move that the planning commission deny the appeal, but that staff and the applicant work together to propose to the supervisors or to bring forth a proposal to the supervisors to evaluate the current policy and see if they would like to modify it to include individual treatment options for the county going forward.
Paul's second.
Okay, I have a question on that. Maybe I wasn't hearing real well, but if we deny the, the appeal like the proposal is, then, uh, there's a, a right for the, for the, for the applicants or the appellants to, uh, appeal it to the board of supervisors, right?
Right.
And so this would actually potentially go to the supervisors. So I think some of that extra wording might be superfluous in this case. Really, we're just talking about denying the appeal.
It might be, but I think it's also important that the staff move forward and go to the board and ask for a policy recommendation rather than just.
That's something that can be done, but it doesn't have to be part of this process, you know?
Would that be better as two motions?
Uh, yeah, I, one thought on that is you certainly can't deny the appeal and in the event that this gets appealed, it goes to the board of supervisors. I think you can also provide direction requesting that staff bring this policy issue forward to the board of supervisors and that can be done, uh, as two separate motions. That's probably the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that, uh, the planning commission deny the applicant's appeal.
Oh, do you have to say without prejudice?
With, with.
Because I'm, I'm sure he would like to come back.
So without prejudice would, uh, provide the opportunity to come back on the same issue at a later date if needed.
Okay, I move that the, uh, planning commission deny the applicant's appeal without prejudice.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Hersog, a vote from Mr. Dimete, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and an additional motion, Chair?
Please.
Uh, I move that the planning commission direct the staff to bring forward to the supervisors a request for an assessment of the current county code with regards to the use of individual filtration systems, um, in the future for county, um, property.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Actually, Mr. Hersog seconded before you did, Larry. So we have a first and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Hersog, so a vote from Mr. Dimete, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And the decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment or anyone that submitted written comments on the item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. Thank you very much. A question of the commission, we have an item at 6:05. We probably want to take a break, but my guess is five minutes is not going to be enough. Um, is there going to be an issue if we come back a little bit later than 6:05?
No, the 6:05 start time just means you can't start before it. You can certainly start after it.
Okay. So 15 minutes?
Come back at 6:15?
Yeah, I know. Okay, we're breaking for dinner, but 15 or 20 minutes for dinner?
Twenty.
Twenty. So we'll come back at 6:20 and reconvene the meeting at that time. Thank you. We do. I'd like to reconvene the planning commission, Placer County, uh, for our meeting on October We are moving to our third item, the Placer County redistricting workshop. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star, star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for the public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Nikki Strigan, senior planner, will be presenting the item. You're not? Oh. What Nikki, you didn't want two hard items in a night? Okay, all right, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, this is Anne and Commissioner from afar. Uh, nice to be with you here this evening. Uh, my name is Jane Christensen. I serve as the Assistant County Executive for Placer County, here to provide an introduction to our redistricting presentation this evening. Um, since we were last before the board on May 11th and you had your first advisory redistricting commission meeting on June 24th, county staff team has been hard at work. I have told many audiences, we're essentially the town crier in large part because over the last few months, we've tried to make it known throughout the county that we have a severely compressed timeline because of federal census days, I'm sorry, federal census delays, which have really compressed again our timeline. We reached out to all of our Placer cities. We advised our special districts. We convened subregional community meetings in East Placer, Mid Placer and South Placer. We met with the Placer County Water Agency, whose boundaries are coterminous with our supervisory boundaries. And we even conducted a bilingual redistricting meeting in late September in partnership with Placer People of Faith. All in all, we convened over a dozen meetings throughout the county over the last few months to advise in that redistricting is here, how to take part, why it's important and where to go for further information. We launched our website in May. Since that time, uh, we've had thousands of visitors. We have 327 subscribers, people who clicked on and wanted to be kept updated on all the events and milestones in this process. We had 241 community surveys filled out with residents who wanted to share their thoughts with you about how the lines should be drawn for the next decade. And with the arrival of the final 2020 census data in late September, now you are center stage as the advisory redistricting commission. Um, and so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nikki Strigan of our SEDRA department, uh, which has really done a lot of the heavy lifting. Um, and I want to also call out Dennis DeSalle, who's worked closely with Nikki, crafting the alternatives before you this evening that comply with state and federal laws for population equivalent districts, which is a unique challenge, given the tremendous growth in West Placer, as you all certainly are well aware of. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nikki Strigan of SEDRA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, as Jane mentioned, Nikki Strigan, senior planner with your planning services division. Uh, here we go. Uh, so, um, this is review for your commission, uh, from the June 24th, uh, meeting that, uh, we were last here at, uh, but perhaps for some members in, in the audience tonight, this is, this is great background. So, uh, the census is completed every 10 years. Um, this is of course, the census is a count of every living person in the United States. Uh, it impacts funding for schools, infrastructure, housing and more. And the shifts in population growth that are identified in the census help inform the redistricting process, uh, which, um, helps to define legislative boundaries, including county boundaries, city boundaries, these are, there's state legislative, uh, districts and so forth that are also evaluated as part of redistricting. Of course, tonight we're talking about county redistricting. In addition, uh, as part of this process, we're looking at compliance with the Voting Rights Act. So here's a look at our current timeline. Jane had sort of somewhat emphasized the compression due to some data delays, but you can see how far we have come along in this timeline, uh, including the arrival of census data in the month of September. Draft maps, of course, published in advance of this meeting, uh, just last week. Uh, so we're, we're in the thick of our public hearing process or the beginning of our public hearing process as we march towards a deadline of December 15th, um, which is the deadline to the state of California to adopt maps. Some additional background here and some legal criteria that we'll be talking quite a bit about. Um, it's set forth in the California Elections Code that provides, um, a process and, and identifies this criteria. Uh, we are looking at alignment with the Voting Rights Act and the criteria that we'll be talking about, uh, includes in this priority order, the following, uh, contiguity of districts, so all district boundaries or lines have to be contiguous, uh, integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest, integrity of cities and census designated places, natural and artificial barriers, including things like streets and highways, rivers, uh, and then geographic compactness, which is defined as not bypassing nearby populated areas for more distant populated areas. Again, looking at that timeline, uh, we have approximately six weeks from today's date uh, until maps are presented to the board of supervisors for approval. So you can see the October 14th date, uh, today and, uh, just in about three weeks, we'll come back to your commission on November 4th and then about an additional three weeks to the board of supervisors for an adoption hearing on November 30th. So I'm going to speak a little bit about some of the demographic, um, data, or this slide covers the demographic data, uh, that was received with that new 2020 census data. I think when I was here last, we were looking at data from the American Community Survey, which is a projection put forth by the Census Bureau. But the data, uh, of course, came in September and, um, there was a 16.3% increase in Placer County's population in the past decade. So that's an increase from about 350,000 people to just over 405,000 people. And then the screen shows the breakout by race, uh, just over 67% white, 15% Hispanic or Latino, 1.6% black, 8.6% Asian, uh, 6.3% identifying as two or more races, and then less than 1% for the other populations, American Indian, Eskimo, Aleut, uh, Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander and those identifying as other. We did look at this data in comparison to the previous decade as well as in comparison to the state of California as a whole. And one takeaway is that Placer County is becoming more diverse as, as time goes on and, um, it is not quite as diverse as the state of California as a whole. Here is a look at where those population changes took place. So the population increased largely in the incorporated cities. Uh, it increased in the city of Rockland by almost 26%. In the city of Roseville by just over 24% and in the city of Lincoln by just over 16.6%. There was limited growth in the other incorporated communities in Placer County, including Loomis, Auburn and Colfax. And then there were minor population losses in the Tahoe Basin, so around, uh, two hundredths of a percent for a total of just under 14,000 people. And that's from the area from the Sierra Nevada Crest east, eastward into the Tahoe Basin. That's the population in that area. There was limited growth in the other areas of District Five excluding the Tahoe Basin, so that would include areas like Alta, Dutch Flat, Meadow Vista and Forest Hill. Uh, and then there was limited increase in the total population within the unincorporated counties, so a total percent change of almost 5% in the unincorporated areas. The chart above you or the table above you shows the population change by supervisor district. So you can see the 2010 population in comparison to the 2020 population. Uh, and the greatest population increases occurred in districts one and two, followed by districts three, four and five. Um, but, uh, uh, of course, the growth in one, two and three with cities of Lincoln, Rockland, Roseville, largely in those districts are, are what are attributing to that, uh, So in, in addition to the slide I had showed on federal and state criteria, the concept of one person, one vote is a very important one in this process. Uh, a, a single elected representative is equally representing their constituents in accordance with population totals in each district. And this slide shows, uh, population change by district based on a concept called parity, which is achieved when each district represents the exact same number amount of people, um, when it, when it achieves the, the exact same number of people. Case law tells us that parity is not absolute. Um, it's a factor, however, in, in the map making process. And you can see in this table, the adjustment that each district has to make in order to achieve parity. Uh, so again, 2010 population and 2020 population are shown on the screen. If we take the total population in 2020, so 405,306, and divide that equally by five districts, the total required to achieve parity is 81,061. required to achieve parity is 81,061 people per district. And then the far right column shows the change that each district would need to make in order to achieve parity. And I think the striking things on the screen here are that District 1 would need to lose just over 16,000 people, and District 5 would need to pick up just under 13,000 people. And of course, we'll talk more about deviations associated with each of the maps. Parity represents a 0% deviation, which is the difference between the smallest and largest district, and we'll be showing those deviations tied to each of the map alternatives this evening. Jane had touched on this public outreach effort, so I'll go through these quickly. Staff had launched a website in May of 2020, the Redistricting Placer website. We have conducted 13 presentations throughout the county, including, as Jane mentioned, one community meeting with Spanish interpretation. Since the staff report writing, 327 email subscribers have subscribed to updates on this topic. Seven of those email updates have gone out, and then six press releases to date have been sent, including to Spanish-speaking media. On the topic of public outreach, a community survey ran over the course of the summer and was a key way for staff to conduct outreach and collect information without the census data in hand. So we've talked a little bit about communities of interest back in June. And short of utilizing that data from the U.S. Census Bureau, we collected information about communities of interest using this survey. The survey is designed to collect the following, that information based on these three questions: what bonds your community? Where is your community located? And why should it be kept together or separate from another area? And then subsequently, there was a tool, a mapping tool, that individuals could use to draw polygons and areas around their community of interest. So this chart shows some of the results from that survey, as does the next slide. This shows the percent of surveys by geography. Roughly half of the surveys were collected from the unincorporated parts of the county, as you can see on the right-hand side of the pie chart. This included census-designated places, such as those on the north shore of Lake Tahoe. There are seven census-designated places on the north shore, including Carnelian Bay, Kings Beach, and the like. Other census-designated places in the county, there are numerous, but others include Meadow Vista, Newcastle, and Penrin, and Sheridan, as well as Granite Bay. On the right-hand side, these are broken out, of course, by east, mid, and west. And when that's denoted on the map, that's including a survey that cited a specific census-designated place. So if somebody cited Meadow Vista, then they were actually included in the mid portion. If someone cited Sheridan, everything west of Auburn was included in that western portion. And then, of course, everything east of the Sierra Nevada Crest falls into the unincorporated east portion, where no CDP or no geographic area was cited with, where there wasn't sort of definable area, like the Dry Creek area, for example, those fell into unincorporated, no CDP. But you can see by and large here, we received a lot of surveys from the unincorporated parts of the county. We also received surveys from incorporated areas, so those are noted here. 22% from the city of Roseville, 12% from the city of Rockland, 5% from the city of Auburn, 4% from the town of Loomis, 3.2% from Lincoln, and 1.4% of the surveys were from the city of Colfax. The slide before you, and also further discussed in the staff report, cites some of the top issues that people had cited for what bonds a community and what keeps it distinct from other areas. Across all geographies, community character was something that was cited. You know, community character can be kind of hard to define, but that, you know, we define as attributes that make a community unique, that establish a sense of place for a resident. Some of those can be intangibles, like community service and helping others in my neighborhood, or some can be more tangible, like an attractive downtown. So that came up in a lot of, all of the geographies throughout Placer County. Recreation also came up, related to East Placer and the Tahoe area, to some extent tied to industry, the resort industry and tourism industry. Amenities were cited in the western part of the county. People had drawn polygons around where they shopped, and where they went to parks, and where they sought entertainment. That was identified in conjunction with where they lived. That was identified in the western part of the county. School districts were cited across all geographies. Development patterns, in particular, lower-density-type development patterns, were cited in the unincorporated areas. Demography also was cited. As an example, there are a growing Asian-American population in the city of Rockland was identified, related to race. Aging populations, in particular age-restricted developments in Lincoln and Roseville, were also identified. And then, as related to housing, mainly affordable housing issues, in particular tied to the eastern part of the county, were identified as issues. And then finally, in District 5, the, I think your commission talked about this back in June, the large geographic size of District 5 and the diversity of the issues throughout the district were something that were also identified in the survey results. So this is just a reference map. Of course, you all are very familiar with these lines. These are the current supervisory districts, the ones that are being evaluated through this process. Again, in addition to the state and federal criteria that was mentioned earlier, the following additional factors were considered. I think that your commission discussed some of these back in June, but some of these were further identified and developed with consultation with our clerk recorders' office. I do want to clarify that these come after the federal and state criteria in priority order. Those are the kind of key ones that will follow. These would follow after. And they are: to utilize the existing supervisor districts as a basis, in other words, to minimize drastic changes to existing boundaries; to consider community plan areas; to consider entitled specific plan areas, or areas of growth; and minimize segmentation of the incorporated cities, to the extent practicable; to preserve district cores in higher-density areas; and to follow existing precinct lines where possible. I'll make a note here, too, since I had been asked, you know, future growth areas versus, you know, entitled plan growth areas aren't something we necessarily account for in the numbers, right? Because 2020 census looks at every living person at that particular place, at that particular time, and any projection into the future isn't really something that we would account for. But that is something that has come up in some comments. So what was staff's process as far as creating maps? Staff started with the existing supervisor district lines and created a map that achieved almost absolute parity based on knowing the following. We knew that District 5 needed to add almost 13,000 people to achieve parity, and the natural place to do that was by moving into the populated areas of Districts 2 and 3. We know that District 1 increased in population by 35%, which resulted in a need to reduce that district by over 16,000 people. And then naturally, that reduction would happen in adjacent districts, Districts 2 and 4. Any gains from District 2 were going to be matched with losses from the city of Rockland to District 3. And then District 4 had, you know, modest additions, because it's relatively close to that parity number, which currently includes commercial and residential portion of East Roseville and all of Granite Bay. Let me see here. So we are going to take a look at the map alternatives in the next few slides. I'm going to orient you a little bit here, because this is a lot of data, a lot of information on these slides. So what's shown here in the blue line are the current supervisory districts. The red lines delineate the incorporated cities. And then where you see a lighter area moving into a darker area, and this isn't reading as well live here in the room, but a lighter area moving to a darker area, that's the area that's proposed to be gained by that area. I think probably your staff report packets, and as well as some packets in the back of the room, and the large 36 by 36 boards, read better than what's up on the screen. So Alternative A, shown on the screen here, was developed with a focus on balancing dominant growth in the incorporated cities, i.e. Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln, across the entire geography of Placer County. Again, we knew District 1 needed to lose 16,000 people to achieve parity, and this phenomenon was coupled with slower growth in District 5, which needed to gain almost 13,000 people. And that creates somewhat of a cascading effect throughout the county. Bear with me here. Okay. So in this map, District 1 is shifting its population growth. Let's see, right here. This is largely some of the West Roseville-specific plan area, including the Creekview-specific plan, into District 2. And this configuration doesn't change throughout any of the map alternatives presented before you today. The, let's see, this gain here in District 2 is met with a loss of this portion of the city of Rockland, which is bounded by neighborhoods and commercial areas south of Whitney Ranch Parkway, east of West Oak Boulevard, and south of Sunset Boulevard, in addition to some gains into District 3 up here by 193. Again, in this map, District 4 largely remains the same, and includes, there we go, this pointer is being finicky, Sue. There we go. This portion is the remainder of the Granite Bay CDP, so District 4 would pick up that portion, as well as parts of this neighborhood here, near downtown Roseville. It's part of the Diamond Oaks neighborhood. In this map, District 5 shifts beyond the Highway 49 corridor. It includes, or would then encompass, the North Auburn CDP and retain the city of Auburn in its current limits. And here, you can see it moves west to Gold Hill Road, down to Highway 193, and to the north end of Newcastle. It also includes the Sherlin Track area, which is just south of the city of Auburn, and some population east of Rattlesnake Road. This map has a deviation of 1.70%. So again, that's the difference in population between the smallest and largest district. Staff had set forth, I didn't think I, I don't think I mentioned this, but a criteria of keeping all of the maps under 5%, which is supported by case law. So notable features in Alternative A include the cities of Auburn, Lincoln, Roseville, and the town of Loomis. They remain within their existing districts by and large. The North Auburn CDP joins the city of Auburn in District 5, and the District 5 boundary moves southwest to include Sherlin Track and parts of Newcastle. District 3 includes a greater portion of the city of Rockland from District 2. Portions of the western boundary of the city of Roseville shift from District 1 to 2, and District 4 expands to include the entire Granite Bay CDP. Those are some highlights. So this is Alternative B. Alternative B was developed in response to several comments received identifying Rockland as a community of interest, and primarily with the consideration of the integrity of cities in mind. Consideration for the integrity of city boundaries and minimization of the division of these places is one of the state-mandated criteria, again, to achieve fair and effective representation of populated areas. The results of the 2020 census show Rockland's population at 71,603 people, which approaches that target number of 81,061 people per district to achieve parity. So as a result, representation of the city of Rockland wholly within District 3 was developed as part of this option. So in this option, Districts 1, 4, and 5 remain in the same configuration as Alternative A. The key differences here, District 2 is, no longer has any of the city of Rockland within its boundaries. The entire city of Lincoln remains in District 2, including parts of rural unincorporated Lincoln. In this alternative, the District 2 boundary moves to include Penrin and Newcastle census-designated places and crosses over the I-80 corridor to the northern part of Folsom Lake. We hadn't talked about this edge here in the last alternative, but this edge is held by the boundary of Hidden Falls Regional Park, this eastern edge of District 2. Same, again, same boundary, though, is held here as in Alternative A. And then, as mentioned, this configuration right here stays the same. This is West Roseville-specific plan growth, Creekview-specific plan area. District 3 includes now the entire city of Rockland, so I'd mentioned that red line is the boundary for the city of Rockland. Loomis, of course, is adjacent to the city of Rockland, and that is also included in District 3. And then it moves west, I'm sorry, it moves east, east of the I-80 corridor, and it's bounded by King Road to the north, right here, Auburn-Folsom Road to the east, and the current District 4 boundary to the south. Again, this map has a deviation same as Alternative A. It's 1.70% because the smallest and largest districts, that's, the smallest district is 5, the largest is 1, those remain in the same configuration. So the deviation is exactly the same as Alternative A. So some notable features here, again, cities of Auburn, Lincoln, Roseville, and the town of Loomis remain within their districts. North Auburn CDP joins the city of Auburn in District 5, and the District 5 boundary moves west. City of Rockland moves out of District 2 and completely into District 3. District 2 picks up the Penrin and Newcastle CDPs and crosses over the I-80 corridor to the northern part of Folsom Lake. Portions of the western boundary of the city of Roseville, again, that specific plan growth area, are moved from District 1 to 2. And then 4 expands to include the granite base, the full granite base CDP boundary. The slide before you here shows draft map alternative C. And this alternative was developed with consideration for preservation of rural census-designated places and communities of interest in the Lower Sierra Nevada foothills, along the I-80 corridor, including the communities of Newcastle and Penrin, and rural areas west of the Highway 49 North Auburn CDP area. The need to shift District 5 to the west to address population growth in the western part of the county on the valley floor was measured against the need to recognize rural communities of interest in the Lower Sierra Nevada foothills. Some of the survey data cites preservation of rural development patterns, low-density development, preservation of ag areas, and that's what the alternative is responding to here. So District 5, of course, saw modest gains, as we had talked about, in population growth in total, 3% compared to the remainder of the county, in addition to losses, slight, but losses, a trend of losses in the Tahoe area. So this map acknowledges the communities of interest that share concerns, such as land development pressures and agricultural preservation. So again, very similar to Alternative A, Districts 1 and 4 are in the same configuration as Alternative A. District 2 is largely the same as Alternative A. So again, here's that. District 2 is largely the same as Alternative A, so again, here's that. Here's that area of West Roseville, that specific plan growth area that's in the same configuration. Excuse me, let's see. With the exception of population losses to District 5. So District 2 remains in the similar configuration, but there's a loss of population here. I'd mentioned that this was the Hidden Falls Regional Park boundary, so this comes all the way over to Garden Bar Road to pick up some population here, so those are losses from District 2 to District 5. And then some pretty minor changes in the city of Rockland. There's a road here called Wildcat, and those are retained in District 2, as opposed to moving into District 3. Again, District 3 somewhat similar to Alternative A. It's modified to include a greater amount of the city of Rockland, as shown by this area here. This map also shifts the entire North Auburn CDP, so on this eastern edge, this is the boundary of the North Auburn census-designated place until about the Mount Vernon Road and Millertown Road area that comprises the North Auburn CDP. And again, is aimed at retaining rural areas defined by rural development patterns, lower-density development, ag industry, and so forth. Let's see, in this alternative, District 3 retains all of the Newcastle CDP and loses some areas north of Indian Hill Road along Auburn-Folsom Boulevard. So some slight changes down in this area as compared to the Alternative A. Again, District 5 picks up this portion of the area south of the city of Auburn, the Sherlin Track area, and I had mentioned already here, it moves west across the Hidden Falls to encompass the Hidden Falls Regional Park boundary. This map has a deviation of 4.7%, so larger than the others, but still under staff's criteria to keep all the maps under a 5% deviation. Some of the notable features in this map include, again, cities of Auburn, Lincoln, Roseville, and the town of Loomis remain within their districts. The North Auburn CDP and the city of Auburn remain in District 5. City of Roseville's western boundary shifts from D-1 to 2. And then a greater portion of the city of Rockland is in District 3 with some minor differences as compared to Alternative A for District 2. And then District 4 expands to include the entire Granite Bay census-designated place. So I'm going to pass this presentation over to Jane Christensen again to talk about a summary of the maps as well as staff's recommendation.
After all that technical work, I think I have the easier job, the summary. But I do want to highlight the considerable technical work that Nikki and Dennis DeSalle did to essentially integrate 2020 census data, comply with federal and state requirements, and align it with Placer's geography, all in a very few weeks since we received the federal data in late July, I'm sorry, late September. I want to summarize by saying that all of the alternatives presented here tonight comply with the legal criteria set out in federal and state requirements, which are listed here in priority order. And also note that, that said, the staff preference is for Alternative A, given its focus on balancing those priority requirements of contiguity, integrity of neighborhoods and communities' interest for both rural and urban communities, and the integrity of incorporated cities to the extent practicable, again, in compliance with those requirements. This balance is achieved with a minimal parity deviation of 1.7%, the population variance, as Nikki noted, between the smallest and the largest districts. When it comes to process, our recommendations are noted here. Staff recommends that the commission review and provide input and direction on the map alternatives, so a final alternative can be brought forward to you at your November 4 meeting. And secondarily, direct staff to return to the commission on November 4 at 6:05 PM to respond to questions and direction received today. And just a word on that, staff can speak to the analysis presented today, and certainly council is here, to address any legal issues of concern or question. Some of the public input that you're about to hear tonight, we have received in advance, not all of it, so there may well be questions that we can triage amongst ourselves this evening, and others that we will need to report back at the November 4 meeting. To reiterate our timeline, we are here before you tonight, October 14. We are back before you November 4. Your recommendation then will proceed forward to the board for final review and approval at its November 30 meeting for the backstop that the state has given us of submitting an approved map alternative by December 15. Lastly, I want to reiterate for those here in the chamber and certainly our viewing audience at home, how to participate. Follow Placer County on social media. Visit our Placer website. The redistricting tab is right on the homepage that you can click on for further information. Sign up for those updates. Join 300-plus of your fellow residents in receiving the updates as this process moves forward, and providing comments. And on the comment front, I want to shift it back to Nikki because we're out of the community survey business that closed at the end of September, but there is still opportunity to offer comment in the meetings coming up.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane. So as Jane mentioned, we do have a comment form online that we're trying to direct comments to. Of course, we accept comments to the redistricting@placer.ca.gov email, to our commission clerk by email, you know, in paper copy, et cetera. But on our website, there is a link to provide online comments. I'll also note that there is an interactive map available on the website now, where you can plug in your address and identify where under each alternative, you know, which district you are in under each alternative. So that's a feature that I wanted to highlight. But as mentioned, those can be found on the redistricting Placer website, which is at So that does conclude staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer questions if you have them.
All right. Commission, do you have questions for clarification? Oh, Nikki? Or Jane? Oh, okay, okay, Dan?
I think there's more questions out there, but they made me the first one. So could you describe what a census-designated place is? What does that mean exactly?
Yes, I can. So a census-designated place, and actually, let me... may have the very exact definition.
Yeah, I mean...
But it is a statistical geography of a recognizable, easily recognizable place that is not an incorporated area, but is an easily recognizable area, and the Census Bureau puts forth statistics for that particular area. So the community of Meadow Vista, for example, is a census-designated place. If I wanted to pull down information related to housing, demographics, you know, income, housing, et cetera, I could pull that down in one piece of data, one bit of data. But there are many throughout the county, 14 of them, I want to say. Don't quote me on that, but there are several throughout the county that are in unincorporated areas but recognized areas that are known as census-designated places.
Okay. All right, thank you.
More questions, Dan?
Maybe in a second.
Maybe, okay. Anthony?
I have a question on map B. Does it, to me, it looks like Rockland would be obviously by itself and would be the only district or the only city that does not share more than one supervisor?
I'm just going to pull the map up.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, Lincoln. Lincoln doesn't have two.
That is correct. So in this alternative, Lincoln is wholly within District 2. Roseville is shared by two, actually, it's three districts.
Right.
Yeah, it's three districts. Parts of District 2, District 1, as well as this area of District 4. Gosh. Really temperamental. There we go. This area of District 4 is also in the city of Roseville. So that's three supervisors as part of Roseville. Loomis is wholly contained within District 3 in this configuration. Lincoln wholly contained within District 2. The city of Auburn, Colfax, wholly within District 5.
Rockland would be by itself, though.
Rockland and Loomis within District 3 in this alternative.
Okay. Other questions at this moment for clarification?
Yeah, I've got a couple more if it's okay. When we provide, what is downstream? When we provide a recommendation to the supervisors, what will that look like? In other words, will we provide the alternatives that are here, perhaps modified this evening or in the future? In other words, let's say three alternatives will go to the supervisors, or is the intent of staff to provide a single alternative to the supervisors and let them deal with that?
I do think it depends on what happens today, and Clayton, you can back me up here, but our thought is when we come back on November 4, that your commission will have a recommendation to the board of supervisors. But today, you are able to make, you know, based on public comment, based on your reading of the staff report and the presentation, make some modifications and direct staff accordingly.
Yes, so certainly whatever recommendation is provided by this commission will be brought forward by staff to the board. I don't know if there's been further direction in terms of...
Okay, I think a supervisor, not mine, by the way, but I think another supervisor at one point publicly asked that alternatives be provided, so that's why I asked. You know, it's not a big deal, we don't have to necessarily pin that down tonight, but I just wanted to see what you had decided on that, if anything. Slide 49 is additional factors. Now, is that... Who came up with those additional factors? And who prioritized them? Because you indicated that they were prioritized.
Yeah, those are not listed in any kind of priority order. Those come after the state and federal criteria that are looked at in priority order. Staff identified those in consultation with our CEO staff, our interdisciplinary team, CEDR staff, CEO staff, Clerk Recorder's Office identified those as additional. Some of those were brought forth to your commission on June 24. There was a little bit of discussion on them, but those were included again as factors to consider.
Okay. But so there's flexibility on those, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay. And then one final question, really, and this is a very specific one to District 4. So it appears as though this has been here for 10 years, this kind of jut into Roseville, right? So did the current sense, it seems since you've added to the south there, the current census would say that, based on this map, or all of three maps frankly, that this is a census-designated, a census-designated place, and that in the view of staff and based on the census, that east Roseville is more like District 4, Granite Bay, portions of Loomis, et cetera, than perhaps moving to the north would be? In other words, the view of staff is that east Roseville is more like the community of Granite Bay. Is that an accurate way to say it?
That wasn't actually what we were looking at. I think we were leaning on the minimization of change to current boundaries. This is not, this is not a census-designated place, sorry. And this dates back, I believe, to 2000, when Granite Bay needed to pick up some population. There was a lot of growth happening in east Roseville, and so it picked up this portion. I think that's some of the history on it, but I don't know exactly, but it is not a census-designated place. Again, I think the factor we were leaning on was, you know, it's part of the existing line and to minimize changes to the line.
So if it's not a census-designated place, then we are moving to slide 47 for additional issues, and we've concluded that because that boundary existed in 2000, that boundary should be the baseline for today's discussion?
That was the reasoning for staff keeping it in its current configuration.
Okay. Thank you.
Nathan?
Maybe it's in here, but if you could help me, and this may be a specific question, you may need to add, some data that I'm reading about and want to be conscious of with the workload of supervisors is the MACs. And so can we start with Alternative A and help me understand the MAC attendance for each district? And if you don't have that now, or we need to get that later, that's a piece of data I'd really like to see, is how the MACs represented changes with each one of these alternatives?
Yeah. And I'm going to ask Dennis a quick question.
Okay, yeah, no problem, yeah.
Was it MAC boundaries or community plan boundaries that we pulled in during MAC making? Those are largely, they largely follow each other. The community plan boundaries and the municipal advisory council boundaries do follow each other, but do you remember what layer it was?
Community boundary, like...
It was community plan boundaries, okay. So we can look more closely at MAC boundaries, but we did look at community plan boundaries, which are planning areas, right? And considered, you know, like areas. And do follow MACs closely, but we can double-check that for our next presentation to you.
Other questions of the commission?
A question on, excuse me, Nikki. Going back to map C, where up by Wise Road, it's cut off going down, why would that not have been brought down to 193? And how would that have changed the population for District 5? Is there a growth area there? And why would we take out that piece of District 3 and, or take out District 5, the little yellow spot at the top next to that?
Right here?
Yeah, right there. If they're seeing a decrease in population in District 5, why would that have been taken out? And then why couldn't the corridor come down to 193 instead of stop at Wise Road and check, I don't know what that boundary is?
So you're saying, so here's Wise Road.
Yeah, so if you went straight down Garden Bar to 193, which I believe is Fowler Road...
Right.
Would that not make more geographical sense to go straight down there instead of cut that off and then give the population more so to District 5? I mean, are these maps interactive where you can draw these lines and it'll change the population on it pretty easily?
They are, correct. So that, we can, if that's sort of a modification and whatever the reasoning is for that that you're requesting...
I just saw that there was a large, there was a 2,500 people decrease in population in District 5, and so I was just wondering if that was added in, would that try to give that parity?
Yeah, and I'm going to kind of turn to my mapmaker on this. Do you remember this area right here, where this was picked up by District 3? I think it was, you know, it just had to do with, you know, keeping this kind of continuous here. And I don't know the population amounts in those areas, and you don't have to answer that, Dennis, but you're saying, could a modification be made to keep this where this is and then come down towards 193?
Correct.
With your direction?
I would like to see what that deviation would look like, because right now it looks like you're taking too many people out of District 5 and adding to District 3, which doesn't seem the parity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions of the commission? All right, at this time, let's open the public comment period. Everyone has three minutes, and so we'll open up to those in the audience right now. If you would state your name for the record.
Sign up sheets?
Up. And did you sign up on the sign up sheet?
Oh, I didn't.
And are we following the sign up sheet tonight?
Is there a sign up sheet in the back?
Oh, there is. And EJ, are you managing that?
I certainly can.
Okay. Okay. What, do you know you're number one?
I do remember signing up as one.
Okay, EJ.
Good evening, commissioners or committee. I'm not sure which classify you had at this time. I'm Wayne Nader. And I first want to thank you for having both this meeting and the one on November 4th in the evening. I think it gives the greatest opportunity for participation by the community. I was hoping there would be a bigger crowd here tonight. But I'm hoping that there's some online that are participating as well. You have a difficult task before you. I would encourage you to keep this on a very high level of how areas are defined. Microanalyzing issues will only lead to frustration for all. Hopefully, Sue has passed out this presentation. So I'm pretty much following what hopefully you have in front of you that includes a map. A map was taken from alternative B and actually, I believe, enhanced. So I'd like to present that to you. So hopefully, you have a copy of that in front of you. And again, I believe that it really enhanced B. I strongly believe that the modifications more align with the requirements of the redistricting process outlined on pages seven and eight of the staff report. B.2 is much more consistent in its approach to segmenting communities of like interest. It eliminates a regular placement of lines that illogically create perfusions or fingers or islands from the core of the district. The flow of the lines in B.2 has a very balanced geographical appearance and will function more effectively. And it also obviously shows that Rockland would be on its own. And I think that that is something that's appropriate and makes sense to me that it should be done. Political considerations that benefit or hurt particular individuals must be rejected. This is why I believe, as currently laid out, alternative C and defend Granite Bay's alternative D, which you will see, should be removed from consideration. An inconsistent configuration that is designed to favor one person rather than the community at large is highly inappropriate. And it's referred to as gerrymandering. I also have an issue with C because it takes in another MAC for District Five. It takes in the rural MAC. And District Five is already burdened with six MAC meetings right now. And I believe that the constituents deserve to see their supervisor. I am convinced that the reasonable, sensible solution to redistricting is before you and B.2. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll call folks up in order in groups of three. I have a total of 10 folks on the list. That includes Mr. Nader that just spoke. This next three, Jason Wedge, Amber Beckler, and Catherine McBride. Jason?
Good evening, board. My name is Jason Wedge. And I didn't really prepare a statement tonight. Kind of want to come and see what was going to be said, what I was going to really talk about. And one thing that just was kept coming through me is that over these last couple of years, we've really experienced just, you know, just a lot of division among us. And this is... Tonight is an opportunity to look at these maps and everything. Alternative B and like Wayne Nader mentioned also, B.2. I just briefly looked at B.2. I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at that. But I think this is going to give you guys an opportunity to really bring communities together. And what I mean by that is currently, I'm in District Three. I live just, you know, right up the street around the corner here. But all my shopping and everything I do, you know, is over here in Auburn in, you know, a total different district. And so as far as my, you know, being represented, you know, I really feel, you know, I'm tugged, you know, from both sides, from where I live and, you know, where I shop and where I eat and things like that. So I just encourage you guys as you just really look through these different maps. To me, alternative B really makes the most sense. I think that's really going to bring, you know, communities like Rockland and Auburn and some of the other smaller cities. It's going to bring them under, you know, a reputation of just one supervisor. So like Wayne mentioned, you guys definitely, just looking at this, you guys have a difficult task ahead of you. And I encourage you to, you know, not look at this lightly and take in consideration of the, you know, the public that's out here to speak to you guys, to give input on this. So again, I thank you. And I encourage you guys to make the right decision because whatever you make, we have 10 years to live with it. So thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, alternative D wasn't submitted by defend Granite Bay. It was my submittal, Amber Beckler. Thank you. Okay, are we ready?
We're ready.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Amber Beckler. I wanted to start by saying that the proposed map, alternative D, that hopefully you have in front of you, was created in less than 48 hours due to the availability of census data. Since Tuesday, county staff has been tremendously helpful in making that available. I say that because of the quick turnaround, there will no doubt need to be micro-adjustments made to the boundaries. Anyone that has worked with district boundary creation, like Nikki described, knows it's a balancing act to meet all the criteria of the Voting Rights Act, population distribution, incorporating communities of interest as well as congruence with existing precincts and census-designated areas. It's also important for you to know that I do have extensive experience with local government GIS district boundaries. Worked seven years in Nevada County GIS. I know Placer County's elections precincts very well. I also helped to devise the San Juan Water District Division boundaries earlier this year. That was unanimously approved by the board. So at a high level, the creation of draft map, alternative D, focused on leveraging the intent of staff's maps. The district boundaries were leveraged from A, B, and C with adjustments to better align communities of interest and census-designated areas, create more compact districts, and corrected non-standard carve-outs, peninsulas, and islands. The district boundaries have regional focus that represents the diverse mix of rural and suburban along with planned growth over the next 10 years. Public survey themes were also integrated. And I followed natural breaks such as roadways and neighborhoods to create the most contiguous areas possible. It also achieves the population parity at 4% standard deviation. A few quick highlights at each district, which is the matrix I just shared with you. District One contains all of downtown Roseville. The boundary also follows Highway 65 and Pleasant Grove. District Two, it's considered western region, South Plaster. It's a mosaic of rural and growth areas, including portions of North Roseville, which is actually very consistent with the Sunset Area Plan, which is going to be built out along with Lincoln. District Three, central corridor, most of Rockland contained with Newcastle and Penrin. District Four, it contains Granite Bay, a small portion of eastern Roseville, but remove that peninsula that didn't make sense in the 2000 boundary. And then District Five is primarily the same as staff. So commissioners, all I'm asking is that you direct staff to consider and examine the alternative map, D, along with the other map alternatives, and ensure that community members have adequate opportunity to review it as well. I do believe it adheres to the one-person-one vote and complies with all the other requirements listed in the staff report. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So up next is Catherine McBride. And then the next three will be Mike Garabedian, Jerry Mitchell, and Mary... I'm not going to mispronounce your name, so Mary W. Okay.
Hello?
Hi, commissioners. I'm Catherine McBride in District Five. And I agree with Wayne and Jason's speeches. And to me, the winner would be alternative B. It strongly preserves the integrity of the city boundaries. And the city of Rockland is pressing to have only one supervisor representing their city, which is worthy of and logical. And B accomplishes that. And I believe that B has the most sensible approach to the expansion of District Five with North Auburn joining the city of Auburn. And while the realignment of District Five does take in some edges of the Newcastle area, primarily finally gets all of the greater Auburn area represented by one supervisor. Whether it is the city of Auburn or North Auburn, they share many of the same concerns. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, if I could, I just wanted to make sure I had it clear. You referenced alternative B. Mr. Nader and Mr. Wedge were referencing alternative B.2, the map prepared by Amber Beckler. Is that the one you're referring to as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Mike Garabedian, could we pull up the present district boundaries on the screen? I'm here to suggest the need for two additional draft maps. The first one would be a forest, from forest of the Sutter County line to the Nevada County line, forest agriculture area. Now, the first concern about this seems to be an argument that it might be too big. Well, that's only an extension of about 18%, actually, less than one-fifth of the additional distance to go from District One. And also, the Mount Pleasant Hall, which is the main meeting area for that southern, northern, southern-south area, is just a mile or two out of the current District One. And assembly and senate districts are much bigger. And for rural issues, we need to think more largely. And of course, the major problem nationwide is that rural America is being redistricted off the political map. Now, this is not the intent of these maps before you, but it joins that effort. So I think we need to try to make a map that preserves and maintains the rural economy, our focus on the rural economy. And the rural, it's a driving place. People, their drive, and they expect to go distances. Now, the other... The second idea that I think should be looked at is something to address the needs of people who have chosen to live in the unincorporated Placer County. Something that would bring together already the rural forests and so forth. But the areas where our communities that are unincorporated, we should try to have a map that addresses that, addresses those people and their choices and respects that. So those are my main points. I really thank you for this opportunity to get me thinking about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners, because that's what you really are. My name is Jerry Mitchell. And I've lived in Rockland for 40 years. I was mayor of Rockland 30 years ago. So I'm well familiar with the growth, you know, merging out of the Bay Area and Sacramento and Los Angeles and moving on up into our area to bring a lot of energy and a lot of great features, but also those other concerns. All of Rockland's living former mayors have signed a letter requesting that all of the city of Rockland be in one county supervisory district, i.e. District Three. Likewise, the current mayor, Rockland Mayor Gialdo, and the council have unanimously supported this objective and sent a letter to that effect. So many of us want to have Rockland in its own district. And we want to have one supervisor to whom we can direct our concerns regarding issues of our concern. By the commission's data, this request can be achieved by selecting alternate B, which includes the town of Loomis and the county area east of Loomis and all of the city of Rockland. And the alternate B achieves the state requirements, the city and town limits and geographical compactness be accomplished, and communities of interest. Now, according to what we've heard, parity, we're very close to parity with alternative B. 1.7%, I believe, was the number stated. Also, alternatives A and C do not achieve what we want for the city of Rockland and Loomis. And Rockland's percent growth during the last 10 years was largest at 25% and has moved quickly and will probably complete build-out over the next 10 years. Furthermore, Rockland and Loomis share utility districts like SBMD and PCWA and face many of the common challenges in responding to various state mandated requirements like the housing, the regional housing needs assessment, et cetera. While each community is unique in their own way, they are bound by many commonalities. So we respectfully request that you recommend to the Board of Supervisors, alternate B or supervisory boundaries. And I don't know what B.2 is, but I'm sure that'll come out at some point. So thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Final three on the list here in person, Jan Mullally, Bill Halden, and Greg Roberson. I don't see Jan. Bill?
I think you're up now.
I apologize for jumping the gun earlier.
No problem.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'd like to extend my thanks to the staff for the work on this. My name is Bill Halden, and I'm vice mayor of Rockland. Our city council, former mayors, and our Chamber of Commerce. And many residents have asked the commission to consider giving Rockland what has been given every other incorporated city in Placer County for decades, to be wholly contained in one supervisory district. The law gives direction here, mandating that the integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest be respected, along with the integrity of cities. In my 22 years in Rockland, I've been placed in three different districts, District Four, District Two, and District Three. Alternative B would keep Rockland united in one district for the first time in decades. But alternative B does more than respect the integrity of Rockland's boundaries. It also puts the Highway 49 corridor in one supervisory district, places Auburn and North Auburn in the same district, clearly a community of interest as it was prior to the 2010 redistricting. So you'd be returning those communities back together. It brings Penrin and the Penrin-Newcastle and the Highway 193 corridor into one district, District Two. And like all three maps, it provides two districts, one and four, that are largely Roseville districts, with Roseville being the only city in the county with a population that exceeds the size of one district. Alternative B also delivers the most compact districts overall. I want to speak briefly about alternatives A and C. Both of these alternatives would take a slice of Rockland and put it in District Two. As a city, we do extensive work to unite our community from Whitney Ranch in the northwest to the Rockland Highlands neighborhood on the south side of town. Keeping Rockland united in one district respects our community of interest. Alternative B proves that it is possible to do so. Alternatives A and C also split neighborhoods in Rockland. Part of Whitney Ranch would be in District Two, and part of it would be in District Three. Whitney Ranch is an HOA that shares common facilities and activities. It shouldn't be split from the rest of the city. And it shouldn't be split among supervisors' districts. In addition, another neighborhood, Stanford Ranch, would be in District Two and District Three as well. We've heard repeatedly on redistricting that cities should be kept united in one district. Your staff has shown that it is possible and reasonable to do so. Alternative B is the only alternative that respects the boundaries of Lincoln, Loomis, Auburn, Colfax, and Rockland and allows each of those cities to be fully contained in their respective districts. Thank you for your time and work on this important matter.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Greg Roberson. And I'm a past board chair for the Rockland Area Chamber of Commerce. of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and also thank you in advance to staff for all the efforts that's been put into these alternatives. Here in firm support of Alternative B, as Bill Halden had just spoke, definitely a big step forward for not only our business community, but our residents as a whole, having a single district for the entire city. It would certainly be a great benefit, and it's certainly the preference of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce and for the communities and businesses that we support. So, thank you very much for the time to speak, and again, we're big fans of Alternative B. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Sue? Yep, there are people on Zoom, so if you would start going through those.
Ms. Sweeney, you'll have three minutes if you unmute your mic.
I had a quick question. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay. Usually on Zoom, I'm able to do it, but I wasn't sure if you guys allowed that. So I'll go ahead and just talk through my proposed map that I emailed in, and we'll all just have to kind of follow along with the roads and areas that I discuss, if that's okay. Okay, so, hi, everybody. My name is Julia Sweeney, and thank you for the opportunity to present some feedback. I really appreciate the county staff being so responsive to my emails throughout this week, and I am eager to continue to see public outreach even after this meeting. After listening to the speakers at the start, I love that people are bringing forward their maps. People definitely want to dig into these lines, and specifically how it's impacting their community. I'm from the city of Roseville, born and raised, and I'm now raising my own family here. And, you know, so I'm going to really focus on how our city is being impacted by the three presented maps. You'll notice that in all of the maps, you know, District One stays the same. And so, in our proposed map, in collaboration with other community members, we presented a map for Placer County, Map P, because we were hopeful that you would just get so many maps, we had to go to the end of the alphabet. So in Map P, we really looked at what we felt were the most bonded communities of interest within our city. And you've heard it from other people tonight, you know, looking at that I-80 natural break, people talked about the peninsula going over into the District One area, that really, that part should be District One. You know, I went to Vensel Brown, and, you know, it's weird that I would not be in the same district as all of those homes that were built around the same time my neighborhood was in District One. So we really, in District Proposed One in Map P, District One really focuses on those same general aged neighborhoods. It keeps historic Roseville together, so you don't have Roseville High School neighborhoods separated from downtown Roseville and those historic areas. And then it really focuses on recognizing that West Roseville has its own characteristics and its own bond. So really looking at Fittiament to the west as part of District Two, seeing east of I-80 as part of District Four. I definitely think Rockland should have their own district. I support that, and a lot of us do.
Julia, you're at three minutes, so could you?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Can you conclude?
And then, you know, just going up I-80. But I guess my request to all of you is to give the community some more time. Let us send you some more information now that maps have actually gotten out there. And I hope you'll take a look at Proposed Map P for Placer County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Larkin, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. I have a question as well. I would like to show Map P, and if you hover over the attendee list, you can promote somebody to a panelist, and then they can show the map on the screen. Can you do that?
Our technical staff is not up front here right now with us. Sue doesn't.
It's really hard to describe the map without being able to share the screen.
All right. We're.
I think one problem that we'd have is the only screen that we have to share would be on that one, which would be probably too small for most people to be able to see it.
I do have it in.
And I don't know if we have technological capabilities to do it either. So I would suggest maybe just describing it and certainly emailing it in, and we will make that part of the presentation at the next meeting.
Okay, is it, I'm supportive of Map P as well, that Julia just spoke of. Is it possible she had emailed it, that somebody there could bring it up before the end of the meeting, so that public comment can be made on it?
I don't have access to my email at this computer.
Okay. It's really, I mean, it's difficult for the public to comment when we can't show the map, but, yes, so I'm in agreement. The Map P actually does all of the things that, you know, some of the other folks are talking about, but it's a much cleaner map. District One uses I-80 and 65 as a natural boundary and preserves downtown and old Roseville together, and then runs up to Fittiament, where all the new homes are being located, which would be in District Two. Nice and clean, it completely follows 65 and 80. In District Two, it preserves all of West Roseville as the community of interest, west of Fittiament preserves the city of Lincoln and as a community of interest, and also includes high-growth parts of the county, but using those, you know, very natural, large boundaries that are very clear. District Three preserves the city of Rockland as a community of interest and uses 65 as a natural boundary as well. And then, on District Four, we've used Highway 80 as the natural boundary, and it includes east Roseville, as well as Granite Bay, and goes all the way up and includes Newcastle and Auburn. So it follows that natural I-80 corridor up to the top, so I wanted to say that. And then as far as District Five, you know, it's kind of hard to describe that one, but it's up there in the top. It's one of the largest areas spanning. But we'd really like you to take a look at Map P. Very, very, very clean lines, and it comes, we believe, within 3.8 or somewhere around there on the deviation. So it falls in line, and we'd like you to really take a close look at that and maybe potentially present it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, there are seven persons waiting for a comment on Zoom.
Ms. Knifer, please mute your, I'm sorry, unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Patty Knifer. I live in Penrin. I've served on the Penrin and now combined Penrin-Horseshoe Bar map for over 20 years. So we've had a lot of community projects that have got, come through that area, a lot of recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And I'm speaking for myself, but I also, even though the project was not in front of the map, think that I have a pretty good handle on the community. I was so thrilled to see that there was an option, a districting option, Plan C, that put rural areas together, that really respected the integrity of rural communities, what our roads look like, that our scouts are together, our 4H groups are together, that we have team events, that our school districts are together. And Option B, which has been touted by a lot of the speakers, completely ping-pongs Newcastle, Penrin, Horseshoe Bar, even parts of Loomis out of the district that we've been in, and puts it together with an area that we rarely frequent, and doesn't seem like it has the same togetherness or the same autonomy, integrity. It just, Option B is the worst possible for a rural community, an incorporated, smaller area that I can look at. So I really wanted to applaud that there is an Option C that respects the rural patterns and not lose that. So even Option A would have been, would be a better option, in my opinion, for the rural character of this area than Option B. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl, go ahead and unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about process, being a program manager. There are 400,000 residents and 287 filled out a survey. I think it should be determined whether that's even a statistically significant sample that you can represent the data with. Also, people sat here for 25 minutes with a blank screen, and you probably lost a lot of people in this workshop, because there was no one there and nobody knows what to do, just as a process point. In terms of the staff representing, the proposals that were submitted should have been presented by staff. It's a workshop. If there were alternatives other than what staff presented, they should have been presented by staff and/or the participant that submitted them, so that people who have spent a lot of time and energy working on what they said was going to be considered as input should have been considered. Also, staff presenting a recommendation really isn't appropriate. You're predispositioning what should be a working workshop. So we've already made a decision and want the Planning Commission to represent A without having full public input. That doesn't seem appropriate. Also, on, I wanted to say before I run out of time, I fully support Option D. As previous speakers have said, Option C has rural, and Option D has rural. I don't know, I haven't seen P, but I don't think, in general, we always have the big developers and specific plans represented, and now is our time to speak up about how we want representation. Rockland is very well managed. It sounds like they have it together. Why do they need a supervisor, their own supervisor? And in addition, there should have been a matrix presented which showed, you're breaking your own rules, that you suggested, and once I heard, there's three supervisors in one alternative, you're going over roads, you're not going over boundaries, there's islands. There should be a matrix with checklists that show what each option represents. There's too much data here. And so I think it would be fair to actually summarize those points and provide the options to the public, and actually give them an opportunity to provide feedback. Delay the decision. People haven't had the opportunity to look at these other two proposed maps and try and push the meeting out slightly. Presenting a map after it's only been presented within a couple days isn't enough time for the public. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Lang, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jay Lang. I am Chairman of the Board of Rockland Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm a business owner in Rockland. I live in Stanford Ranch area of Rockland for about 18 years. I stand in, or I want to remind basically the two criterias. One is to minimize the community division. Number two is to maintain the geographical integrity of a city. And I think, I think your Alternative B does that. Alternative B has the same districts as One, Four, and Five, but it keeps Rockland together. And as a member of the chamber, we've just had our Hot Chili Cool Cars community event. This weekend, we'll have our Rockland Run. It's definitely a community that I look forward to having one district. And so, I highly encourage you to support Alternative B. Unfortunately, I haven't seen D. I've been, I do tax and accounting. I hope all of you have your tax returns in, because tomorrow is the deadline. But I haven't had a chance to look at D, and so I'm not sure what that might look like. But I definitely support A, B, and C, Alternative B. And finally, I just commend the work done by Jane and Nikki. I know Jane came to our chamber and did a presentation, and she's doing a fine job in promoting this in the community. So, thank you for your time, and this is an impossible task for you, and I wish you guys luck. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Jenny, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Jenny Nysley, Town of Loomis Council, 12-year past executive of the Loomis Chamber and a 40-plus-year resident. Thank you, Planning Commission, for your time and allowing me to speak. I just want to give you my perspective. I feel like Loomis, Penrin, Newcastle, Ofer, and even up to Auburn is part of the Taylor Road historical Highway 40, and they kind of have, we all kind of, they have the same boundaries as the school, and they are similar in needs. And I just wanted to recommend Map C, and ditto the previous speaker that had said for C. And I am a business owner in Rockland, and I fully support Rockland having their own supervisor, so if there's a way that that could even work out, I'm not against that. But I just wanted to give my vote for Alternative Map C. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Crawford, and I live in some city, Roseville, in what has been District One and what will remain as District One. I want to make four short comments. One is that your 25 minutes with the blank screen definitely impacted your public participation. There was a blank screen. I got several texts and emails from people saying, "What's going on?" And I could only tell them, because I had actually signed in five or six minutes early, that you were taking a dinner break. You were just announcing the dinner break before 6:00. So people who logged on at 6:00 had 25 minutes of a blank screen, which did diminish your public participation. I would like to see the staff work through Map B two, because I'm not sure what the major differences were between that and B. Also, Ms. Beckler's Map D, because, again, the public has not been able to see that. It was passed out to the Commissioners, but the public as a whole has not seen it, as well as Map P. Map P, we spent a great deal of time working on to straighten out boundary lines, to make consistent issues around I-80 and on Highway 65. It retains, to answer the questions for so many Rockland people, it retains Rockland in one district. It also takes the Taylor Road group, and it pulls them much farther north, so that they are all part of District Four. District One would get everything west of I-80 up to Fittiament, and then District Two would add the Fittiament, West Roseville, to the Lincoln area. I think both, Map P does a better job of maintaining all of the rural and MAC areas, because it is in larger blocks that are contiguous and are a way to promote identity in local communities. So I hope that you will be directing staff to look at those three maps, and to make them public, and to allow the public to continue to comment on them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have three hands up still?
Yes. Christine, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. This is Christine Johnson, and I am privileged to serve on the Granite Bay MAC. And although I'm sad I'm not there with you, I have this great advantage. I was able to print on all these maps, and I'm able to look at them, and I understand them a little bit better. My point that I would like to make is that, you know, we only get to do this every 10 years, and it gives us kind of a clean slate to kind of fix some of the things that were a problem in the past. And one of the problems in the past was that we had this little panhandle in our district that goes up Roseville Parkway. So we have this chunk of East Roseville that really doesn't, you know, meld at all with semi-rural Granite Bay. And when I submitted my comments, I thought, you know, we really need to move north. Our main drag here in Granite Bay is Barton and Douglas. And I was kind of sad to see that that did not happen and that the panhandle got worse. It got bigger. And again, you know, that area, they are served by, you know, their city council, so they don't relate as much. They don't attend our MACs or anything like that. So I would really mention this to staff, and, you know, everybody comes to this from their own perspective of how they look at it. And the staff has admitted that they started with the original boundaries, and they didn't necessarily want to make enormous changes in those boundaries. But I really would like them to look at it. I've had a chance now to look at map D as a dog and P as a puppy, dog, puppy. And I think both of these are worth looking at, and I'm not going to say one's better than the other. I like them both because the main problem they solve is that they move for, they move north into other communities like Loomis and Penrin that are much more similar. And, you know, as someone who lives in Granite Bay, I drive through those communities all the time, and I feel like, you know, they're more contiguous. So I just really request that you guys ask the staff to do that and listen to the inputs that you've been getting here. Again, I want to thank you very much, everybody, for all the efforts that they've put into this. Obviously, the community cares. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I couldn't figure out how I was going to unmute my mic. This is Muriel Davis, and I'm in Penrin. And I think a lot of people are forgetting that the Loomis Basin area, which includes Loomis and Penrin and Newcastle, has been historically a community for years, hundreds of years. We've been the community. Our schools are all intertwined. The library, we have to go to Rockland to use the library right now or Loomis. It's, this community should stick together, and option, alternative B does not do that. A or C keeps the Loomis Basin area together. I think that's very important to think about the rural communities. Rockland has their city council. They have their city. The rural people do not have a city, the unincorporated area, I mean, do not have a city to go to. We only have the supervisors. And I think it's important to consider us in our Loomis Basin area to be together. I'm getting confused because I only saw three maps, A as an apple, B as a boy, and C as a cat in the report. I'm hearing that there's two other maps, and I think that's a bit confusing. I don't, I like alternative A because it has the less impact of changes for the people already in the area. But A or C, I think, is more important to consider for helping keeping our rural community together. Is there, are there two other maps there, a dog and a puppy?
There are. And there's also B2, so there's three.
Oh.
I think I can address that.
Okay.
So the staff report has alternatives A through C. There were other maps that were provided over the course of today that have been provided to the commission. They will be included in the staff report when it comes back to the commission. But there weren't, those were provided by members of the public.
Okay.
I believe map P, I didn't see that before this meeting. It may have been sent during this meeting, but that will also be uploaded. And, yeah, we will make sure the commission has that. It's just, I think, since these are coming in kind of at the last minute, that's why the greater public doesn't have those in front of them right now.
Thank you. Excuse me, and who are you? I couldn't see your name.
Sure, yes, I should have done that. Clayton Cook, deputy county council.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you for having this meeting and for telling me to unmute. I didn't know what I was doing there. But anyway, I think alternative A or C as much should be considered more than B.
All right.
It's a boy. Thank you.
Karen, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Hello. I am a resident and resident of Rockland and have been a resident of Plotter County since 1962. And I would like to speak to map B. I'd like to see the inclusion of all of Rockland in one contiguous district. This includes school districts and other areas of interest. So please consider map B. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's it?
That's it. All right. One last call. Anyone else want to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public comment period. And Nikki or Jane, if you have responses to the various comments that came up, would be appreciated. One thing, could you clarify, I'm assuming all these maps will be posted online so people can see them?
Yes, we'll make sure that the maps that have come in are contained as part of the staff report that is provided.
I was just wondering if they could go online fairly soon so people could actually look at them, like in the next couple of days?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like we can do that.
Awesome. All right. Were there any responses you wanted to make to the comments made? I know you're writing furiously.
Well, I think I'll just mention, you know, we had received some maps, and we're looking for certainly your direction on, you know, what to consider as part of those maps from the public.
Correct.
You know, I heard a few other things as far as, you know, bringing forward something that looks, well, I mean, again, looking for your direction to look at the merits of these maps as well.
Okay, we'll do that.
A lot of the comments, I think, were reflected also in the survey results, but there were some, a few new, a few new comments, I think I gathered here, too. So, I mean, overall, it's great public comment.
Yeah, one of the things that was recommended was a matrix to kind of show some of the differences. And as, I saw you shaking your head yes and writing furiously. So if you could do that, that, it kind of gets into the number of MACs. You know, it would really be helpful to have that kind of a matrix on these various maps.
Sure. And with respect to that matrix, I guess, what would you be looking for in terms of the, I guess, the differences between them?
Definitely the number of MACs within each of the districts. Trying to think the number of towns, the cities, or the, what is it? The census districts that you had mentioned, how many of those in each would be useful? Other commissioners, any?
Yeah.
Nathan?
I think the priorities that we indicate, how each map addresses the priorities that you've indicated, whether they are met or aren't met, would be very helpful.
Sure. And real quick, quick note. There's somebody continuing to raise their hand on Zoom, and the public comment period is over, so we're not going to be answering that hand. Again, Nikki and Jane will accept comments at your email address, or I think you can get that from on the website. So recommendation is, if you have additional comments, send them to Nikki. I'm sorry.
And just to touch on that last, that last comment by Commissioner Herzog. The level of priorities, that is, that is the state requirement under the election code as to how you're supposed to determine these maps. There is a bit of, I guess, determination that's required with that, that staff is asking your commission to make. So I guess I'd be a little hesitant for staff to provide that because I guess that would be predeterminative of the determination that ultimately you're going to be making. And I would like to just touch on that briefly as part of, I guess, as we get into this deliberation process so that you guys have the framework as to how we would go through this. And so Nikki, if you could, could you put up slide four for me? So under the elections code, and slide four has five items that need to be considered in priority order. The elections code and state law has basically said that this is how you have to determine which alternative to choose based on these five criteria. And so what I'd like to do is just walk through them so you all are familiar with each one of these and how they rank in terms of priority. Since this is priority, each one of these takes, number one takes precedent over number two, number two takes precedent over number three, and so on. So when it comes to contiguity, the requirement on that is that each district needs to be geographically continuous. And the way that's described is that areas can't meet only at points. They need to be continuous all the way through. So you can't have an island where one district is one chunk and then another island as well. They have to all be connected, and they can't, I guess, have that meeting at points, some sort of like hourglass shape, right? You need them fully contiguous. So that's the first priority that you would look at. Then after that, you'd look at the second criteria, which is geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest. And admittedly, community of interest is hard to define. In the statute, it says, "A community of interest is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a supervisory district for purposes of its effective and fair representation." Then it goes on to say, "Communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates." That's still kind of a gray, gray area. There is some guidance in terms of examples, and I'll just go through those so you have an idea. But it is somewhat hard to define. So examples are income levels, educational backgrounds, housing patterns, historical neighborhoods, shared language, shared festivals, neighborhood gatherings, traditions, occupation and employment patterns, shared use of public transportation, shared affiliation with commonplaces, use of particular shopping areas, shared participation in civic organizations, shared broadcast or print media markets, those kind of characteristics. So that's the second criteria under contiguous that you would need to look at. Then moving on to the third one, and this comes after those two. Then you look at the geographical integrity of a city or census designated place, and those are supposed to be respected in a manner that minimize their division. So after you look at that one, then you go to the fourth one, which is natural and artificial barriers. And that basically, the requirement for that is that each district needs to be easily identifiable and understandable by residents and that they're supposed to go along rivers, streets. Basically, the district boundaries need to follow some sort of topographical descriptor. Then you go to the last one, which is geographic compactness. So, and they all have to be looked at in that criteria. So going back to Commissioner Herzog's point, if staff were to put forward a matrix that said, "Okay, this one is top for contiguity," then I guess, to some extent, that would be staff kind of putting forth a recommendation as what should be chosen by you because it is in priority order. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm a little hesitant for staff to do that because I've, these are ultimately determinations that your commission would have to make. I think staff can put forward some, a matrix that identifies kind of objective criteria. But to move too much further on that, I just, I'd be nervous that we're flavoring the decision that ultimately you would be making. And ultimately, you might disagree with staff's interpretation of those, so.
That's well taken. I think if I could clarify, there's new maps. And I think with staff's perspective on how those maps compete with in the proposal, going through your process, helping us understand if they are different, meet the standard criteria that you went through, that's what I was intending for your checklist. We'll go through this process. We'll do this piece here as clearly defined. But the new maps that were included by the public, I think there are some interesting things with those additional maps.
Okay. All right. At this time, let's bring them back to the commission for discussion. Anyone?
I'd like to ask, I guess, a question of Clayton, I guess. As we, you know, we all look through a different lens on this. If one of the commissioners has a, you know, a desired thing for staff to look at, what process do we go through to codify that to ensure that staff does? Is it require, do we require a motion and a vote? Or does an individual simply ask staff to look at it, and we reach agreement between that commissioner and staff?
Yeah, and I've, I guess, there is no pre-established criteria as to how this should be handled. My initial thoughts are, if it's information being requested, I think just by simply asking staff, "Can you gather this information in this meeting today?" That's certainly something that can be done. My thoughts are, though, if you're asking for a drafting of another alternative, that does take a considerable amount of staff time. So my thoughts are maybe that's worth a motion on your part just to make sure that there's a majority interested in a different alternative because that will take that, a decent amount of staff time to prepare that and draw those lines. But I guess outside of that, I don't have a set framework for how this would play out.
Okay, so if, as Nathan suggested, we want to take a look at, you know, a couple of those other maps, perhaps, that would be a motion and request for, you know, for approval as a majority, right?
Those maps will be brought forward, and if you want, staff can give you their preliminary thoughts as to whether or not they comply with these five criteria.
They could do that now?
Probably, they would need to take a look at those.
Yeah.
The next meeting. In fact, I haven't seen map P yet.
P, I haven't either.
And I don't know if staff has, so we would.
So we would review dog and puppy, and we will do that at the next meeting. Is that right?
But we do have dog in front of us. We don't have puppy.
Right, that's true.
And I did also want to stress a point that was brought up by a couple of the commenters about needing more time to review this. We are somewhat constricted by the deadline of December 15th. So we will review this, but staff would perform more time as well. Under the timeline that we have set, when we come back to the, to your commission, the next time, we are going to be needing an alternative, and that's just based on the timeline to get things done. So we will provide that information. We just would ask that you provide us whatever information is needed so that we can get you in a position to make that determination at the next commission meeting.
Okay. I have one more question, but I'll defer to others for a moment.
Well, just real quick question about all these maps. I mean, they've been presented, it would be interesting to know how they compare, but obviously, to put them into the GIS system and do all the calculations that you did on A, B, and C is timely. Is it possible for the staff to review these? It'd really be nice to get some feedback prior to the next meeting, like.
Yeah.
But review each of these maps. So you have, what, I think we have five maps that were submitted to us?
Yeah.
It's what?
Six maps, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Staff will do their best. They certainly will commit to having the staff report out and the information out a week before.
All right.
I guess the concern is, with a lot of these maps, we have to look and figure out what the population is for each of these on the drawings. And a lot of these maps that have come in from members of the public don't have population calculations, right? So, and we, so we have to sit down and, I guess, track and figure out if kind of the deviations for each of these, as well as to look at census designated places. And some of these come in in formats that can be easily overlaid over our system. Some of them are just copies, right?
Right.
And so we're going to have to kind of mesh that into a system, which will take some time. So we can commit to the week before having that information out. But I just, I don't want to commit to something that we ultimately can't deliver on in terms of a turnaround.
All right. So should have these maps been delivered to us with population deviations instead of just drawings by the public to save us time, considering we're under time constraints?
That would certainly be preferred. I don't think we can require that. I mean, yeah, we need to take in any alternative maps that are provided. We ultimately need to provide to you and do an analysis of. That would certainly make it easier if the people that provided maps could provide kind of population breakdowns, but we can't legally require it.
One of them does. Thank you, but there's one that don't.
One of them does, thank you, but there's one that don't.
Another question. What if maps continue to come in before the meeting? How will, and I wouldn't be surprised if they do.
Yeah. We'll do our best to evaluate them. I, yeah.
All right.
It's, it's going to be a difficulty. It is.
Understood. Okay. Nathan, I'm.
Yeah. Okay. I have a couple of quick comments. I'm sure map P, too, is being drawn. You know, I really appreciate the comments being shared by Rockland. And I got a lot of respect for and understanding of keeping that city within its boundaries. I'll try not to take offense. I'm District Two. You're trying to kick me out. That's okay. But the second item here on the list, the problem I have with alternative B is this real long projectile that happens with District Two. It doesn't seem to me Point Two. Oh, you're going to go to the map. So that awkward green area becomes part of District Two. And it just seems off. And I'd like to see a map where Rockland remains intact, and we don't have that awkward projectile appendage for District Two. So some of these additional maps have that. So that's, that's something I'm struggling with at this point.
I think, Nathan, kind of going on your point, that's why I kind of asked, I don't know if I need to, if we have to have a recommendation, that I'd like the map C to be looked at, were those two points that I made to Nikki earlier. Kind of what you're saying is, yeah, you're getting kicked out of this one, but these are being added, and it does kind of jaunt across 80, and it doesn't make sense if we're supposed to follow boundary lines. So Clayton, do we need to ask, or if I ask Nikki for those changes, does it have to be a recommendation? Does that be voted on? Or we just ask for that, and it could be presented later? Or how do I get that information?
So are you talking about the, the points you mentioned earlier about?
Correct.
The modification along the district line?
Yeah.
Might, I might turn to staff to see how involved that is to change that, if it's.
I guess one thing I, we would need is direction. We can make that modification. The other reason, the other thing we would need is some justification for, for why. I mean, I think that's, so, but, yeah, we can take a look at additional population coming down this, this way. But the why has to be tied to the priority criteria. So that's the type of direction staff would be looking for.
I guess my thought would be for staff to draw another alternative. It might be worth a vote. And I guess I'm, what I'm trying to do is just make sure that we're, we don't have an overwhelming number of alternatives that we're bringing forward. And so I just want to make sure that, I guess, if we are drawing another alternative, that it's something that the commission is seriously interested in, in looking at. So I would recommend a vote for any alternatives on that basis.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think in some ways, we, we probably have to protect the staff a little bit here and be the buffer. Because if we aren't, I mean, we need, you know, we're appointed, they're not. You could have 55 alternatives come back. So it could be really difficult for them. May I make a quick comment, I guess, and then a question, I guess it is for staff? It's really, it's really just a comment, I suppose. I think the epitome, honestly, of a peninsula is that the projectile that goes from Granite Bay into Auburn, or, not Auburn, to Roseville, I'm sorry. And so this is why I asked those questions earlier. The addition to the south, you know, it's logical if, in fact, one of the reasons that we're doing it is consistent with, with federal law. We're adding that in because we've assumed that the boundaries that already exist are things that we have to attach ourselves to. In fact, that's not the case, because that is optional. That was on slide, whatever it was, as opposed to slide 38. So if, if y'all could bear with me for just a second and just recognize that peninsula that's sitting there, which is pretty obvious to everybody, and just go back to slide 38 for a second. Because everything that we change has to be tied to the criteria that exist on slide 38, and not the optional things principally, right? Sorry, if you can't get to 38, it's okay. I think we can, we can, he's got him. Yeah, I've, you know.
The legal criteria.
Yeah. So, so, a- as you go through your plan, you know, the good news is, map D does, in fact, eliminate that peninsula. Now, I'm not going to, it's up to the staff to determine what you do if map D were to be used and eliminate that peninsula. I'm not going to tell you what to do. I mean, I can say that moving through to Loomis is something that some of the people indicated they were interested in. And frankly, makes a lot more sense to me than Roseville, because we don't have a lot of commonality with Roseville versus what we might have with Loomis in the Granite Bay region. So, but if you look at those five things that are listed there on the, on the code chart on, what, slide 38, contiguous, it would be if we eliminated that peninsula, the neighborhoods and communities, I think, of interest would actually be more beneficial, frankly, if you moved to the north on District One. I know this is like whack-a-mole, because once we do that, then something else is affected in another district. But I can say, looking through the lens of District Four, I should say, looking through the lens of District Four, I think integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest would be more preserved. Integrity of cities and census-designated places, probably at least as preserved. Natural and artificial barriers, including streets, well, Highway 80 is a great street, and it would be, you know, one of the principal boundaries there. And geographic compactness, probably reasonably well as well. So I encourage you to take a good look at District, at Option Four, or Option, I should say, Option D, and consider especially that peninsula for revision. Yeah.
Other discussion? You know, for myself, looking at this, I liked the option B, too, because it did bring Rockland into itself by itself. And I, I see Loomis being connected into Granite Bay, Penron, and I think there are some commonalities there. Don't know how the numbers work out, but it seems to make sense to me. Also, District Five seems to make sense. Now, the one thing Mr. Garrett Beegan brought up is kind of a different approach, which would be the rural versus urban areas. But that would take District Five, I think, what he was recommending, all the way to the western county boundary. I don't think we're ready for that one yet. But I would say, with the next census, it's very possible that that becomes something that makes some sense at that point in time, but not at this point in time.
Yeah, I'm, that, that's not, it's not entirely clear to me where that would go. But hearing the description of it, I'm guessing there's, there's probably not a lot of population that lives in those forested areas and some of those rural areas. And so again, in trying to hit that roughly 80,000 mark to create equality among the districts, that, that would be my guess, without knowing exactly what the configuration is.
Okay. So is it direction the commission wants to give at this point in time to staff in preparation for November the 4th?
I have one more comment after you maybe think about that. For alternative B, going into, looking at alternative B, it kind of splits up the Placer Unified School District into a couple of different districts. And right now, it's kind of, it feels like it's its own home together. And to divide that with a, somebody who wants to be their own city and kick everybody else out, but only keep part of the school district, now you're going to have two supervisors in that school district, which kind of feels like it's their own together, because it is Placer Unified School District. And now I think that division, I don't see or feel that that would be good for that community. Now you're taking part of that rural community and splitting it in half. We like taking Rockland and splitting it in half. And I don't think that's maybe not fair to those people who live in those rural communities that don't have a large voice like the city of Rockland or Roseville or, or Lincoln. So I'm a little opposed to that one, just because if there could be something that fixed Placer Unified School District together, I think they feel like they're all together already. And to split them up, I don't think that would be a good choice for those kids.
Okay. Is there a motion, then, to give staff direction?
So, if I can just kind of recap where I think we are so far, and maybe suggest next steps. Staff will be putting together a matrix with respect to the alternatives that include the number of maps and number of towns and cities and census-designated places. They will also do an evaluation of the alternatives that have been provided so far by members of the public. And I have down that that's, there's four of them. Have an alternative D provided by Ms. Beckler, an alternative B, too, also provided by Ms. Beckler. I have an alternative B provided by Deanna. And then I have an alternative P as well. So we will be.
Could you, did you, did you, you only, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we may carve one of those out.
So D is the one I submitted for public comment. B dot two was a draft in my iterations of creating district boundaries. I actually didn't submit it, and I didn't give approval to submit it. I think it does have good integrity. And that was submitted by other people in the public that did receive a draft copy. Thank you.
Understood. So, yeah, maybe I misspoke. I guess, we do have an alternative that is B two, that we will need to evaluate. Yeah, I guess it's not being submitted by Ms. Beckler, but.
I created it, but I, it was actually a draft that was.
Sure. And I, I guess where we're at is, we did get the map as alternative. So I think at this point, we do need to evaluate it. And there were members of the public that are supportive of that as an option. So, so we will, we will evaluate those and give you our thoughts.
All right.
I did hear comments from commissioners about wanting to see alternatives, specifically Commissioners Dematte and Woodward about potentially modifications to alternatives. If there are an alternative that you want staff to bring forward, I would just ask, do you make a motion on that so we have direction outside of what we're planning to do with respect to those topics already?
So I'll ask the two of you, is that, evaluate those changes, or do you want a whole new alternative showing those changes?
In, in my particular case, the alternative D and maybe even one of the other alternatives is sufficient to cover the waterfront on that.
Okay.
So if you're going, if we're going to do that, I'm fine.
Okay.
So would that include, so would both of our asks be in the same recommendation? Or does it have to be two recommendations?
Well, the question is, at this point in time, the staff is going to evaluate your recommendation. The question is, do you want a brand-new alternative, alternative E?
C two or whatever.
Whatever it is, too specific.
So I would have a recommendation, and he would have a recommendation. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
Yeah. Honestly, I, alternative D is sufficient to cover what I am interested in. It carves out the peninsula, which I think is the most significant aspect of District Four's issue.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that. I don't need to do anything more. On, on the other hand, quite honestly, I'm going to support anything that any of these commissioners want to do, because you all have equities in this.
Right.
And I'll, so if you need to do something, you can, I'll probably support it.
Okay. I would just like to see the, recommend, I would like to recommend then keeping the Placer Unified School District together in District Three and not splitting it up. And again, also, for those boundaries that I asked about earlier, if that would help the population deviation, to try and make it even and not take away 2,500 people from District Five.
And you're recommending, is that a recommendation for a new alternative?
Sounds like you would prefer that as an alternative. So I, I guess, would that be a motion, then?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have that alternative.
All right.
C two or B, D, AMD, whatever my initials are, if you want to put it on there.
And if I could, just before we vote on the motion, I'd like to just check with staff to see if they have enough clarity to be able to draft an alternative along those lines.
Yeah, I think we do. So first, this alternative C two, we'll call it C two, C V, C version two, is to look at this population area and see what that configuration might look like coming further down here.
Right. And also to try and keep, Rockland is intact as possible. I don't know if it can happen. But also not separate the school district of Placer County Unified School District.
Right, yeah. You know, and I, I know that our clerk recorder, registrar of voters was in here. We've had some public comment on school districts. Those, they go through a separate process. Those lines do not need to be coterminous with county-district lines, but we can, we can take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
And bring back a comprehensive answer about how the district might be impacted.
Okay. So that's a motion. Do we have a second to his motion to create?
I might have a comment on that, because Placer, you're talking about the high school district?
Huh?
So like.
Like Loomis Grammar, Penron Elementary.
That's Loomis, that's Loomis.
Placer, well, yeah, I'm sorry. Not Placer. You're right. I'm sorry. I meant Loomis School District. Thank you for that clarification. That's why I'm not in the education system, and I'm a farmer. My boundaries are split by trees. Thank you. So I'm sorry, Loomis School District. I'm sorry.
All right.
Seconded.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please, on alternative C two.
C two. Okay, we have a first by Mr. Dematte, a second by Mr. Woodward. So a vote for Mr. Dematte, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Herschel?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
For the chair, one, one additional question or for discussion. And I'm serious about this. I, and I don't know how people feel about this, but at some point, we do need to close the good idea window. And if we don't.
Right.
The staff will be inund, inund, potentially inundated with, you know, well-intentioned good ideas from people. And we may wind up paralyzing our staff, which has now received guidance from us. So I'm curious about whether we should be the public's pin cushion here and say, you know what, I think people have had an adequate time to consider this. It's come to us, and we've made a decision that this is, these are the alternatives we're going to have examined. We have given them a lot more work to do, and that's sufficient. And so the good idea window in, with regards to new maps, et cetera, is closed. I'm willing to make that motion. I don't know how you all feel about it. We'd have to see.
I know my, myself, since the maps came out so soon, and we just had this public meeting, I would like to see a few more days if people have recommendations. But no more than a week. But I would agree with you, it should be closed down at some point in time that, you know, and it's kind of up to the staff, you know, is a week. That gives, because then we need a staff report, and that only gives you a week to prepare a staff report, correct? No?
For you.
I know. It's just the, it's the logistics. It's not, okay.
And we, we end up with our, we end up with the staff being the arbitrator on what is and is not going to be examined as opposed to us.
Right.
Okay. So ju, just to walk through deadlines, if we have a meeting on November 4th, that means the staff report would be made available to the public on that Thursday, October 28th, which is two weeks from now. So a one-week deadline for additional maps would give staff one week to, I guess, analyze those maps and put them into a staff report to get it posted.
And, and under those circumstances, it seems to me that the staff would have to accept every map offered, because there's no higher authority that's been given, you know, authority from the supervisors to curtail that. I'm, I'm not advocating either position. I'm just thinking about what it would be like to be in their shoes. It could get quite interesting.
If we're, if we're asking for more time, is we can extend it another week to go to not November 4th, but November, the next following Thursday, to give them more time?
That's Veterans Day.
I have to work. I'm a farmer, so we don't get a day off.
I mean, we could go, I, I'll tell you, we could go two weeks more. But then we have probably staff up against the wall there, too.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if.
You know, the asking is, except maps through the end, end of the day on Monday, so they have a weekend. I mean, we've had the hearing. But I, I'm sure there's new ideas that are arriving, and we're probably going to hear from. So I, I think just a little bit of time to comment.
Steve Padretti, Cedar Director, I'm just worried that we'll get an infinite number of them if we go more than a day, to be honest. There can't be a lot of time. We've got to cut it off. We have a lot of new options. There can't be a lot of time, we've gotta cut it off, we have a lot of new options that came up today, so I think we're gonna have a pretty good variety, but I just want to be careful not to get too many. Some of these, Dennis is really good, he can do these, some of these pretty quickly, and, and we really gotta recognize him, a GIS guy never gets recognized, I was gonna come up here anyway.
Thank you, yeah.
Dennis has done a fantastic job. He's always in the back room and doesn't get seen, so I'm really happy that he's here. But we can, we can make some adjustments, but we just can't have an infinite number of things, a little tweaks, so.
I guess, to me, it seems that the first thing you're gonna do is take a look at the deviation percentage. And if a map doesn't pass muster on the deviation percentage, then, you know, you don't really have to analyze any further, I would say, so.
Correct.
So that's, you know, one way it's gonna self, self-analyze, I guess, in that regard.
So if it doesn't meet those requirements, they could just put it in the shredder, right, and just move on, to give themselves time, or do they still have to report it to the other?
If they don't meet the requirements, I think they report back to the commission that didn't meet the requirements, but the staff doesn't spend any more time evaluating.
Right, so we will, we will be bringing any of the maps that we have so far forward to your commission, even if they don't meet the deviation requirements of five percent that staff has set forth, and that'll ultimately be up to your commission to decide that they're not worth proceeding further.
So possibly a deadline for any new comments on these maps, either end of day Friday or sometime on Monday, either of those two days. And I'm, I'm almost thinking give people a weekend to ponder.
I would suggest, the map alternatives are the ones that are gonna take the most amount of time. Comments, they're not a huge obstacle, I mean, those can be reviewed.
But the maps, either end of day Friday or end of day Monday would be, give people enough time, and I'm thinking end of day Monday gives the weekend and...
I don't think we can prohibit people from submitting them, but I do think as a commission, you can indicate that you're not going to be reviewing them for purposes of your recommendation.
Correct. So what kind of motion does that? And who wanted to make that motion?
Do you want to have a motion to have a deadline to receive and review maps?
The motion, I believe, would be that the Planning Commission will receive and review maps that we have received through the end of Monday, and direct the staff that any additional maps could be provided to us, but will not be analyzed for purposes of us looking at alternatives.
Quick question, just because I've been on the website, I'm not sure how long it takes to get the recording on the website and the audible, I understand that there were some people that may have left due to a blank screen, I want to be sensitive to that. When is the soonest that people might be able to watch this and be available, so that then they can provide...
I'll run back and get that answer. Okay, because...
They have to do the post-captain first.
That might be part of my recommendation for a deadline, just honoring maybe our, our dinner, much-needed break, but I want to honor people be able to view this and then provide some thoughts.
Okay.
Again, I'll just remind you, they can still provide the comments and they can be ultimately looked at when it goes to the board, there will be time for those to be considered, but to get back to you on November fourth, it's gonna be a little bit tough, so.
Five o'clock, Monday.
So we have a great IT staff, we'll have it up in twenty-four hours.
Excellent.
This meeting.
I know. And, and how about Monday, five PM on Monday?
Monday, five PM.
So, who's making the motion?
Nathan, he talks better than I do.
I'll make a motion that we accept thoughts and consideration for alternatives with maps for the public through the end of day Monday, which I believe is five PM.
Five PM, five PM on Monday.
The eighth, right?
What was that?
Nothing, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Eighteenth, I'm sorry.
Seconded. Okay, we have a first and a second.
First from Mr. Hersog, a second from Mr. Woodward, vote for Mr. Dematte, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any other discussion or wish to make any other motions? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.